Good evening. I would like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you all for being here. We have one action item on our, on our study session tonight, and that is item number one, the two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget presentation. We will start our meeting as we do with almost all of our meetings with an opportunity for the public to join us and speak to council on any item that is on the agenda. So that is on the, on the proposed budget. And I don't have anybody signed up to speak, but if you're here in City Hall and would like to speak at this item, you may do so now by coming to the podium. If you're joining us online, please raise your hand in the virtual format, and we are happy to bring you into the meeting. And I'll give it just a moment. I don't have anybody coming forward at City Hall, but I'll check with our city clerk to see if anybody has raised their hand.
No one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, no one has raised their hands to speak on, on the public's right to speak. I'll give it just another, you know, not a full minute, but a little bit of time. And it looks like no one has raised their hands, so we will move past our public's right to speak and go to our agenda item number one. This is the two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget presentation, and I will turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very excited to be here this evening. Ms. Weaver, sorry, and we just had a few technical difficulties here before, but I think we're all set to go. So I believe council member Valma Sorebeck is online also. Val, you there? Or she's gonna be. She'll be joining us here shortly. We all ready? Set to go? Staff? You ready, Rachel? Okay, let's do it. Ready?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for all being here this evening. We're happy to present to you this evening the two thousand and twenty-four proposed budgets. You know, you may have been hearing and seeing the phrase recently, "next chapter." You've been all seeing that. Y'all had t-shirts in the Carnation Festival, right? Probably asking what, what that's all about, but tonight you're gonna, I think, learn a little bit more about that. My mic's not on. As we move into the next chapter of Wheat Ridge's wonderful story, we will be investing in our next generation of residents, infrastructure, and community. For example, we're just wrapping up the two E bond infrastructure package. We're implementing the U R A bond infrastructure package and are preparing, hopefully, for potential two J is the ballot number we got for our ballot question this year. So preparing for the potential two J bond infrastructure package, which will provide funding for necessary street sidewalk and drainage improvements. We're continuing, continuing our community engagement through the next phase of Let's Talk Wheat Ridge with updates to our comprehensive plan, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Economic Development Strategy, Stormwater Master Plan, Sustainability Action Plan, and the Residential Waste Management Strategy. We're building on capacity in our, our citizenry through our Wheat Ridge one oh one, one oh two, Police Civic Academy, and Boards and Commission programs. We are developing a sense of community through a variety of opportunities to live, work, and play in Wheat Ridge. Hopefully, you'll see this evening that our two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget is focused around this next chapter in Wheat Ridge. Next slide, please. So this evening, we have with us here our, our budget and executive management team. Our budget team is, of course, Ally Scheck, our deputy city manager, who leads the budget. And we have Mary Ann, of course, and we've got Cole back, back there. Cole, raise your hand. Cole did a lot of great work this year on, first year on his budget, so thank you, Cole. And then, of course, all of our directors and all of our staff. We put a lot of effort into the budget every year, so I want to thank everybody for that. We're gonna walk through our vision and priorities this evening, kind of a year in review of, of two thousand and twenty-three, and then a budget overview of the two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget. We'll go through all the different funds and strategies and staffing and benefits and kind of looking ahead and talk about our budget process. Next slide. So once again, the city did earn the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for our current year's budget. This, to earn this award, the budget must meet a number of detailed criteria established by the government Finance Officers Association, which is then reviewed by three budget experts from across the country for compliance. The two thousand and twenty-three adopted budget included some new documents or ways of presenting information in order to better comply with the GFOA's updated requirements and to be better used to you, our decision makers, and the general public. So we'll be applying for that again for next year's budget, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get that again. The budget is, is really a tool to help us and you accomplish your goals and your vision. And I always like to remind city council and the public what our vision is, which was established several years ago. But the Wheat Ridge Vision two thousand and thirty-five is Wheat Ridge is an attractive and inviting city and communities for families, community for families. Wheat Ridge has great neighborhoods, is a hub of commerce with a choice of economically viable commercial areas, and has diverse transportation. We urge us committed to environmental stewardship, and its residents enjoy an active, healthy lifestyle and are proud of their hometown. We urge a great place to live, work, and play. We hope you'll see many things throughout the budget that are helping us meet that vision. To talk about our council priorities real quickly, too, the budget is based around these priorities. These priorities were put together several years ago, but we're still working on them. They're pretty comprehensive. Some of them are completed. Some of them have funding in the two thousand and twenty-four budget. You'll see in the slides here, the ones with the red asterisk, those are the ones that actually have funding in the proposed two thousand and twenty-four budget. And we'll speak about each of these as we move along tonight. But the first priority of council was the new efforts of engagement in government, understanding city processes. We definitely have money in this, in next year's budget. Implementing bulk planning in all residential zone districts, that priority has been completed. Reexamining and advancing sidewalks in Thirty-Eighth Avenue. We definitely have money in the budget this year, and, and we will next year, and we're focusing on West Thirty-Eighth right now. Reviewing the mission, vision, mission, and funding of local works. That priority was completed, but we're still funding local works, and Paige is here this evening from Local Works, and she can answer any questions you may have about her budget. But we definitely have funding in the budget for, for them. Next slide, number five, is streamline our permit processes. We do have some funding in, in the budget for that next year. Commercial corridor improvements, quite a bit of funding. We can, we'll talk about some of that again this evening. Policy on non-conforming accessory dwelling units, that priority has been completed, and developed solutions and work with partners to address homelessness. We definitely have funding in, in next year's budget and probably will for some time. We'll talk about that a little bit later, too.
Mr. Goff, Mr. Mayor, it sounds like Ms. Nosler Beck is, has joined us.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Great to hear. And with, with that, I believe we have all of our counselors here tonight. Is that right?
We do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, next slide. So looking, again, just a quick look at the year in review of, of this last year, two thousand and twenty-three, not quite over with it, but we've come a long way, I think, over the last year recovering from our cyber attack. I think we're ninety-nine percent probably complete. We're not like Vegas right now, if you've been watching the news. So they've moved on to some bigger, bigger fishes out there. I'm glad it's not us anymore, but our team's done a great job, I think, of bringing us back. We've celebrated our one-year anniversary of our attack, just a few weeks ago in, in August.
Twenty-ninth.
August twenty-ninth. And we've, since then, we've been, we've created a much more secure network here at the city. But there's, there's always challenges, and there's gonna be, and it's getting harder and harder every day, I think, to address these issues. So we're on, hopefully, we're on top of it. We've learned a lot over the last several years, and I think we've learned a lot that sometimes we do our best work during times of crisis. I know we've done, over the last couple of years, we've worked really hard on some issues. And tonight. Retirement. It's been, I wouldn't say it's not a huge challenge, but we're seeing some retirements from the city, some long-term employees. They're still continuing. We had a couple more this year. They, they leave us with a great amount of institutional knowledge with them, but fortunately, I think we're, we're doing a great job of hiring some really great people. You've been, you've met a few a couple of weeks ago, and got one sitting right here. And so we, we've developed a great culture here in Wheat Ridge, and we are attracting some great talents. So our capital improvement program is, is kind of been a challenge, and it's gonna be a challenge, I think. It's harder and harder to fund each year. We're, we're receiving a lot of federal funding and other grants, but our infrastructure's aging, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit this evening, too. But it's, it's, the costs are going up, infrastructure's aging, and we're seeing that a lot, so. And speaking of that, do, stormwater management has been a, a challenge this last year due to the heavy wet spring. I think it's really brought it to light even more. It's brought to light our deferred maintenance in our stormwater maintenance system or our lack of stormwater maintenance across the city. We've had several failures here this year, which we're working on right now, unfunded expenses, and luckily, we were able to find some money for those. But I think Maria will talk about this a little bit later. We have a list of, of other, other areas of the city that may pop up if it continues to rain as it has been. Inflation has decreased recently. It's down quite a bit, actually, since last year this time, but there are still some relatively high costs for some items that were, that we need to purchase. And our sales tax is, is starting to flatten out, so that's been a little bit of a challenge this year. We saw some pretty good increases during the pandemic and COVID years, but we're starting to see that increase flatten out a bit. It hasn't decreased, which is great, but it is flattening out, which decreases the amount of revenues we have for our budget expenses. Next slide, please. Again, sticking to kind of the review of this last year, we've had a lot of great things happening in our community still, a lot of major developments underway. One of the biggest ones, Clerk Creek Crossing, of course, is continuing to move forward. We'll see a new beautiful hospital here, hopefully by the third quarter of next year. Many of you've toured that building, I know, and pretty proud of that being in Wheat Ridge. The medical office building that's gonna supplement that hospital is going up as, as we speak also. Second phase of the multifamily is, is going up very quickly. If you don't go out there very often, the, next time you drive by, it looks like there's always something new out there, so. Lifetime Fitness is now vertical, and due to open next year. We hopefully see a, a new hotel going up very soon. Dutch Brothers and Come and Go, of course, have been open for quite some time. Residential development is continuing at the Wheat Ridge Ward Station, which is realizing our vision of transit-oriented development. Parallel multifamily building opened here just a couple of months ago. Toll Brothers Town Homes is, is continuing their project. The Ives Multifamily Affordable Housing Project, Forty-Fourth and Wadsworth, is under construction. We're seeing great progress at our Gold's Market, which is, it's, I would call it necessarily a major development, but I think everybody loves this project. It's a small project, but I think it just shows so much about Wheat Ridge, tells so much about Wheat Ridge, this project. Soon to come is Legal Pete's, Live Slow Brewery, and Bowling Alley, Heidi's Deli, and Rich Spirit Bagels should be opening here, hopefully even before this year's out. And finally, the Ridge Thirty-Eighth continues to really blossom with some new residential rooftops, which are important for business growth. Several new businesses opened this last year, Yop Sycree, Mestizo Brew in Cantina, Get Right's Bakery, Wolf and Wildflower, which is having a ribbon cutting tomorrow, right? Yeah. Huckleberry Roasters, I just saw, it's gonna be open next Friday, so looking forward to that. And two new major employers along Thirty-Eighth, Shannon and Wilson Engineering and Mass FX. I think they have ground, or ribbon cuttings next Friday. But they're bringing fifty employees to Wheat Ridge along the Thirty-Eighth Avenue quarter. And some new businesses on the way, the sushi and Little Brazil Restaurants in the West Thirty-Eighth Apartments, Rolling Smoke Barbecue are still set to open here, hopefully, maybe by the end of the year, one or two of those, but probably next year. Applewood Shopping Center continues to add new tenants such as Valvoline, Nothing But Cakes, and coming soon is Chick-fil-A. That should be open very soon, a couple of months. So again, sticking with, with twenty-three, next slide. Looking back at the twenty-three estimated general fund budget, see where we're estimating to end up based on what we budgeted. We started off this year with about one point seven more in reserves than we expected to, to have, and we're expecting revenues to come in about one percent less than we originally budgeted this year. Again, a lot of that is because of the flattening out of sales tax. Expenditures are about point three percent higher than we expected, than we budgeted. And the good news is, though, at the end of this year, we're projecting about one point eight million more in reserves than we originally budgeted. So that was just a quick review of two thousand and twenty-three. Now we're gonna jump into the twenty-four budget, and I'll turn it over to Ally to get started.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Good evening, mayor and council. So yes, turning now to the twenty-four budget, we'll briefly discuss the overall budget fund structure. We'll touch on the budget itself. We'll work through the major funds, those funds that comprise more than ten percent of the total budget, where we'll discuss projected revenues, expenditures, major projects, and then we'll wrap up with a discussion on fleet, staffing, challenges, and opportunities. So just a little reminder about how our, our budget is structured. So we have the general fund that you all know is really our operating, that's our main operating fund, and the majority of our personnel and our costs with sort of running the city. I knew that Mr. Quinn was gonna, I brought a book in for him, and he couldn't, I told him, he's like, I don't need one, but he went and he got it. But most of the, the costs associated with sort of running the operations of the city are all in the general fund, right? So we'll talk about that. And then next, you can see our eight special funds this year. So last year, we had seven. This year, we have eight. This year, you all added, yes, whoop, whoop, for the Wheat Ridge Housing Fund, the newest fund to our mix. So in, you know, the case of these special funds are designated by law sometimes, sometimes by law, to track sort of revenues and expenditures separately, and sometimes they just make it easier for us. And I would say the Wheat Ridge Housing Fund is probably one of those to keep, to keep track of revenues and expenditures. So these funds include public art, police investigation, open space, municipal court, conservation trust, equipment replacement, crime prevention, and again, the newest fund, the Wheat Ridge Housing Fund. And just as a reminder, that fund was established to capture revenues and expenditures related to the creation and promotion of affordable housing in Wheat Ridge. Its ongoing funding stream is fifty percent of the lodge, of the lodgers' tax generated by short-term rentals. So half of that tax goes into the Wheat Ridge Housing Fund. That's the ongoing revenue stream. I'm talking about it now because it's new, and we really don't cover it later in the presentation because it's not considered a major fund. And of course, that fund is established that, you know, we're hoping that we will attract other grant revenues into that fund to fund other priorities within that affordable housing plan. So again, just a little reminder about the Wheat Ridge Housing Fund. Very excited about that. So moving on, if you go below the special funds, you'll see the Capital Improvement Program or the CIP. You'll see we have in your, in the CIP section of this budget, we, we show a ten-year plan for that fund. And as a reminder, twenty percent of the city's lodgers' tax is the only really ongoing funding stream for that fund. Next, you'll see the Renewal Wheat Ridge Bonds Project Fund. We set this fund up in the two thousand and twenty-two budget? Yeah, two thousand and twenty-two budget to accept transfer payments and expend, and expend funds for the projects associated with that Renewal Wheat Ridge bond issuance. And then finally, we have the two E Bond Fund, which tracks the revenues and expenditures, and mostly at the moment, and now debt service payments associated with two E. So a little reminder of our, of our fund structure. All right. So the proposed two thousand and twenty-four budget, for your consideration, is a little over ninety million dollars when we look at all funds. So if you look at that left-hand column on the slide, it shows a beginning bond, bond balance of about forty-six point five million. Again, this is all those funds together. Revenues of about eighty point eight million, expenditures of about ninety million, with an ending fund balance of thirty-seven million dollars. The center column just shows the bond fund, and you can see the expenditures there at thirty, you know, three, three, three point five million, so, you know, strictly debt service at this point. And the column on the right just shows you sort of the, the other funds without two E. So our total, overall, the total proposed budget has decreased about two point four million from the original two thousand and twenty-three budget. So that's about a two point six percent decrease in two thousand and twenty-four. This is largely due to the scheduled budgeted capital expenditures for projects such as Wadsworth Boulevard. In other words, we budgeted more in twenty-three than we're budgeting in two thousand and twenty-four. So this chart shows the proportion of each fund to the total budget. You can see that the general fund is always is about fifty-four percent of the total annual budget, and together, the capital funds, including CIP, Renewal Wheat Ridge, and two E, account for thirty-four percent of the budget, leaving the other special funds to account for about twelve percent of the budget. Open space, again, we consider open space a major fund. It's typically about ten percent or more of our total, is at nine percent. Turning now specifically to the general fund, as Patrick mentioned, we, sales tax has started to flatten out, so this budget conservatively, conservatively projects very little revenue growth in twenty-four over the two thousand and twenty-three estimated budget with a two point eight percent increase. Sales tax revenue, revenues have flattened, so to ensure this budget is conservative and financially prudent, we project no growth in sales tax revenues with the exception of some new sales taxes generated by new businesses like Chick-fil-A. So we've said, okay, we're not expecting any actual growth in the, in the local economy in sales tax with the exception of some new businesses. So we know that, that we've got some, you know, Chick-fil-A is a great example of a new business at Applewood that we expect will do very well. We also know that we'll have new businesses opening like Patrick mentioned at Gold's and also along Thirty-Eighth Avenue. So we're projecting about forty-seven million in revenues in two thousand and twenty-four. This chart shows the composition of the general fund revenue, and you can see here that sales tax alone comprises fifty-five percent of the general fund revenue budget. So I have to say, it was a little bit of a challenging year this year. It was a very challenging budget because in years where we project no or limited growth, we really have to focus our budget on the continuation of services as opposed to new initiatives. Despite the slowdown in the regional economy, and by the way, all of our neighbors are in the same boat, Patrick mentioned that, this is not just a Wheat Ridge thing. Everyone around us is experiencing the same, and some may choose to inflate their sales tax numbers, and we simply don't. We know that you value a conservative approach, and that's what this budget represents. But we are optimistic about Wheat Ridge's future. As Patrick mentioned, several residential and commercial developments are in the pipeline that will continue to bolster our local economy, and we are hopeful that sales taxes will improve beyond projections. Compared to the two thousand and twenty-two actual results, the two thousand and twenty-four budget projects a thirteen percent decrease in revenues, mainly due to one-time revenues in two thousand and twenty-two, including ARPA, the Stadium District Funds, which we're doing some really fun things with, and one-time building use taxes. Projected revenues include a slight increase in property taxes and modest increases in licenses and charges for services. This chart shows revenues from year to year, starting in two thousand and fourteen on the far left. So it's, it's tough to see, I think both in your handout and on the slide, but the portions of each bar in orange show one-time revenues. These infusions can create a false picture if we don't properly interpret those. So the one-time revenues in two thousand and twenty-two, for example, are about four, four point five million, and that includes four million in ARPA and five hundred thousand from the Broncos sale rebate to us. No one-time revenues were identified in two thousand and twenty-three or two thousand and twenty-four, so that's good. Everything we're showing in the twenty-four budget, we can anticipate remaining in future years. So you'll, you'll note here again that we are showing the flattening of revenues that we talked about. We see a dip in twenty-three compared to twenty-two and only a slight increase in two thousand and twenty-four. All right, let's talk about expenditures. The twenty-four budget includes a general fund of forty-eight point six million plus transfers of three point nine million, transfers out of the general fund into other funds. This is a two point one percent decrease compared to the two thousand and twenty-three adjusted budget, again excluding transfers. We project that this budget will leave the general fund with an ending fund balance of twelve point nine million, of which eight point two million is considered unrestricted, which means it is not saved for a particular purpose. Now, this council's fund balance policy sets the minimum unrestricted fund balance at seventeen percent. And this is the first time in a, in a few years that we've presented you with a budget that actually meets your minimum fund balance as opposed to closer to your target, which is twenty-five percent. We obviously also have the emergency reserve at three percent per Taba. So that's another three percent on top of the seventeen percent that we can use in case of an emergency, and you can see those numbers on this slide. So I mentioned the unrestricted fund balance. Let's just touch on the restricted fund balance so that you know what we're specifically saving funds for. We'll talk about ARPA a little bit later in this presentation, but about one point eight million, if our spending plan plays out the way we believe it will, the way we project, at the end of twenty-four, we'll have about one point eight million left of ARPA money to spend. And again, we're restricting that for the uses that we all discussed, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. About one point four million, three percent of expenditures is reserved per Taba for emergencies. And then we have another, we have two hundred and twenty-two thousand in our PEG fee, so that's our public, our Channel Eight, money that comes in through Comcast. We can only spend on initiatives towards, towards that, that TV channel, so we, we reserve that for that. And then, of course, we have the, just over a million remaining as a liability associated with the Fruit Dell Loss Long-Term Loan. You can see here how the general fund budget is spent by department. So the police department is our biggest spender. Anyone feel a song coming on? He's the largest budget, thirty-one percent. And, you know, so much of our budget is FTE that I thought it might be helpful, as we talk about this part, to talk about the number of employees in departments. So police department is the largest, thirty-one percent of the general fund and a hundred and five FTE. Parks and Rec is next at fifteen percent and about forty-nine FTE. FTE means full-time equivalence. Okay, good. Public Works is thirteen percent of the budget with thirty-four FTE. Administrative Services is next at eleven percent of the budget with thirty-one point five FTE. And again, that's all the sort of internal services for the city. Community Development is seven percent of the budget with fifteen point seven five. Municipal Court is three percent of the budget with twelve. General Government is eight percent of the budget, and that includes a mix of the, the people in general government, is a mix of you all, you are all in general government. So you're, the elected officials, we have a number of contracted employees in there, and then we have nine employees. The groups in general government, the city council, city clerk, city treasurer, city manager, economic development, the city attorney. And then you can see here we have central charges represented at about twelve percent of the general fund budget. There's no people in central charges, but it does include a lot of the centralized expenditures for the city. So our workers' compensation program, both premium and deductibles, our property liability, property casualty insurance is all in there, medical, dental, life, janitorial, utilities, all the really fun stuff, the remaining COVID-19 expenditures, all lives in central charges. So in total, this expenditure budget represents a 2.1% decrease against the 2023 adjusted budget. I mentioned transfers earlier. We have $3.825 million going to the Capital Improvement Fund and another $100,000 into the Equipment Replacement Fund to continue saving and funding the ERP. So the good news, ERP is the Enterprise Resource Planning System. We know this is a big and pretty expensive initiative for the city to really select, but honestly implement. It's the professional services that go into all of that implementation. And so the good news, you've helped us save for that for the last three years, including 2024. So next year, we'll have a total of $844,000 saved in order to fund that total initiative. We're transferring over $825,000 of ARPA restricted funds into the CIP budget to help with maintenance projects, with the other $3 million from the unrestricted reserves to complete other capital projects and maintain our infrastructure in the CIP. And so Maria will be discussing the CIP in detail in just a little bit. This chart shows the expenditure history of the general fund versus ongoing. And again, if you look at the orange on top of the columns, those show you one-time expenditures, which we don't have any in 2024. There's none budgeted in '24, I should say, one-time expenditures. And then finally, before I turn it over to Maria, let's just talk a little bit about our unrestricted ending fund balance history because I know that's very important to you all. Again, you have a policy that says that we will have a minimum budgeted unrestricted fund balance of 17%. And as I mentioned, this budget comes in right at 17%. So this chart shows the last decade of our budgeted and ending fund balances. The blue bar shows the budgeted, and the orange shows the actual. And you can see that we've, you know, our conservative style of budgeting has consistently led to a healthier ending fund balance than budgeted year over year. The blue bars are, I mentioned the bars. Oh, the gray in 2023, that's our estimated fund balance for 2023. And then, of course, the yellow is the projected at 17%. So we'll come back to talk more about staffing and general fund priorities later in this presentation, but for now, I'll pass it over to Maria to talk about the CIP.
Thank you, Ally. Good evening. So 2023 has been a challenging year, to say the least. So we have a lot of construction going on, some planned, some unplanned, of course. And some of the big ones, as you all know, is Wadsworth Boulevard, which is now up to $51 million in construction costs for, as we have added in the additional work. The 52nd Ward and Tabor Area Streets are $7.3 million. We're currently constructing the Bridge and Youngfield over Clear Creek, which is another, just over a half a million dollars of construction costs. Then, of course, the Rec Center Roof and Parking Lot, which are together about $2.8 million. And then finally, our emergency storm sewer repairs at, right now, just around $700,000. So 2024 is also setting up to be a very busy year as we begin construction on several projects in addition to that, as well as refine our maintenance efforts. So as Ally mentioned, we have a 10-year capital improvement program that's laid out within the budget document. And in 2024, we want to do some more refining of that, so really start to address that from the perspective of our resource allocation. So looking at it from not only what money we have available, but also from a staffing perspective, and try and get those cost estimates more accurate, and then really plan out our work more efficiently, as well as identify where there's opportunities for grants and start looking ahead so that we're not behind, but actually proactive about addressing and finding those alternate funding areas, if possible. So then also, we want to focus on streamlining how we deliver projects. So focusing, of course, not only on delivery in terms of time, meeting schedule, but also budget, as well as the quality. So really, those three legs of the stool, if you will, but focusing on all of those with our capital improvement projects to consistently deliver those in a similar manner. So as Ally mentioned, the general fund will infuse $3.825 million into the capital improvement program this year. And this is supplemented by approximately $1.575 million in grants and other sources. Wadsworth Widening Project will continue to be the largest expenditure overall. I believe we have planned about, just for construction, just a little over $11 million within the budget. And of course, that construction will extend not only through 2024, but also all of 2025 as well. Yet you see there that we still project a very healthy ending fund balance of just over $10 million. Next slide, please. So just to touch on a few highlights within the CIP. Again, we have the improved Wadsworth project there, as well as preventative maintenance. So that encompasses everything of what we're currently doing. So our mill and overlay, our annual maintenance of the roads, our slurry seal, our concrete repairs. And what we will be working on this year is a refined pavement management program. So we're going to focus, instead of just kind of looking at the entire city collectively and picking streets out to be done, we want to look at it more from a zone perspective, meaning that we'll focus all of our efforts in a particular zone. This will improve communication, as well as the way that the contractor goes about the work, and hopefully, we can get in and get out and lessen the impact on the neighborhoods. So more to come on that later this year. We'll touch on that a little bit later. We'll also be starting the environmental and design work for the Wadsworth Path along the west side of Wadsworth, between 32nd and 35th. We were able to secure a Dr. Cog tip grant for a good portion of that. So we'll begin that design process here later this year and continue that through 2024. And then finally, the Stormwater Master Plan update. So again, that was last updated in 1979, so we think it's about due. To, for a little refresh, you know, especially, yeah. The public works nerd. So want to look at that. And really, what that focus is, is we know that there's problem areas. Staff can certainly identify those. I think what the intent of the Stormwater Master Plan is going to help us do is identify how we prioritize those, put some relative cost to that, as well as look at how do we address detentions? So not just upgrading what we have right in place right now, but how do we solve longer-term projects in terms of where do we put the water? And ultimately, what that'll lead to is hopefully a discussion about, do we implement and should we implement a utility fee for stormwater? A shameless plug. And then just continuing on with that list, our annual projects, as we try to do each year, is pavement striping and marking. Trying to adjust that again from that zone perspective. Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. As you know, this year, we've modified that a little bit. So we're establishing a cutoff date for those requests so that we can get all of them in the pipeline and hopefully, design and construct them so that we're delivering them in the same year that we're working with the blocks on those or the neighbors. And then ADA improvements are geared primarily towards curb ramps, upgrading those and replacing them where none exist currently to facilitate moving around on our sidewalks. And then the traffic signal improvements. One of the elements of that, $67,000, not all of it, but about 20, I think it was about $22,000, we're going to be initiating a study of the traffic signal systems, kind of all on Youngfield to 40th up to 32nd, and then in the Clear Creek area so that we can coincide and modify the timing to coincide with the opening of the hospital. So we want to make sure, of course, all the signals are working or those two that are off right now, but we want that system to work collectively. So looking at the signal timing of all of those, how they integrate, as well as with the on-ramps to I-70 will be an important thing to get done, probably just prior to the planned opening in the summer of 2024. All right. So then, our proposed 2024 and beyond. Did we go back one slide, I think? Nope. Okay. So our limited funding for other things other than Wadsworth in this next year, certainly. And so really focused on that so that we can continue and make sure that we're adequately funding that project, bring that to completion in 2025. But we still have those ongoing needs in there that have been identified. So again, that's striping, pavement maintenance, and ADA improvements, as well as neighborhood traffic management in the next year. So really, part of, again, of looking at that longer-range CIP is not only what our needs are for new things, like adding the Wadsworth Path along the west side of Wadsworth, but also focusing really on how do we maintain our current infrastructure? So sidewalks, all the things that are already in the ground, how do we take care of those? So there'll be a larger emphasis on that and more funding probably needed to be dedicated in that area. And then we'll be moving on so that we can prioritize, again, those limited resources and focusing and are strategically pursuing grant opportunities so that they align with those prioritized projects. Okay. And then just touching on the possible bond projects. So again, the language for the bond was written relatively broader so that we could encompass a wide variety of projects, but really focused on those sidewalk, bike lane, and street improvements. An example currently of that is our efforts on West 38th, which you saw a presentation at the study session last week ago Monday. We'll also be identifying other projects that fit within that category. Then filling sidewalk gaps, as well as sidewalk repair and replacement. Right now, we don't do a whole lot of that. That responsibility for sidewalk repair falls back on the city. And you may have seen what the City and County of Denver is doing. They're getting ready to implement a new fee for all property owners related to sidewalks. Again, that effort really falls on the city, in our case, in Wheat Ridge, so we need to look at that on a more holistic basis and how we address that. And then finally, drainage and floodplain improvements. So again, our several failures that we're working on right now, we really want to try and get more proactive so that the street isn't failing and that we can address these before we get to that point. So our intent really is, if the bond measure should pass, is that we would work to inventory kind of all those areas, projects that fit within those categories, assess the conditions, come to some preliminary prioritization of those, and then seek input from the community to help us refine that project list before we start anything. And then just other necessary but unfunded projects. Traffic signal repair and replacement. We have 48 signals throughout the community that have really been, I think, well-maintained from staff, but they're getting to a point where the components no longer can just be replaced. So we're looking at, over in some cases, a complete replacement of the entire signal cabinet, mast arms, everything. And so that gets extremely costly. And then I know facility improvements, Patrick will touch on this later, and the needs there. So then I think we'll transition into the Wheat Ridge Bond Projects Fund. That slide there shows the outline of the entire area. And we've broken that up into three kind of sub-areas that we focus the projects on. So the first being the Applewood area in and around Youngfield up to 44th. And we have several projects identified in that area, primarily working on the Youngfield beautification. So that's the west side of Youngfield between 28th and 40th Avenue, as well as some improvements around the bridge there at I-70 and 32nd, as well as at 40th Avenue. And then bike lanes, adding those on 32nd underneath I-70. So all of those projects will hopefully complete design here in the next several months and be able to move towards construction in 2024. Then we've identified the potential to construct a bus terminal over on the Clear Creek Crossing site. That project would construct a two-bay bus terminal, so basically, an area where buses can pull in, do transfers along Clear Creek Drive south of 40th Avenue. And that would allow both routes 28 and 32 to serve both Clear Creek Crossing and the western part of Wheat Ridge. So staff is still working on that, still working with RTD on that, but we're planning ahead for potential construction. Then we need to do some scour repair under the Youngfield Bridge over Clear Creek, and then also planning for public art in and along the Youngfield area. Then in Kipling. This is our plan for 38th and Kipling is, again, to replace the signal there, actually widen out so that we have additional turn lanes in the east and westbound direction on 38th. That will also include modifying or adding some sidewalks and modifying pedestrian actions through that intersection. That is a CDOT-owned signal, so we have to work through them to actually get approval and have them approve the design before we actually construct it. And then they oversee the, or help us oversee the construction as well. Then the heat recovery units at the Recreation Center, we just awarded that last meeting. So that, as I mentioned in the council memo, that takes about nine months to actually construct those or build those units. And so they'll be installed probably April or May of next year. So that installation cost shows up here for as a 2024 expenditure. Then doing some bridge repair on the Recreation Center Bridge as it comes into the site, as well as installing an electronic entrance sign, which was a carryover from this year just due to its lack of capacity with staff on that one. And then finally, in the Ward Station area, we've got three significant projects going on. The first one, of course, that has been working on for a while, we're in the design and environmental stage right now of the Ward Station area. TOD, Transit Oriented Development, or specifically, the South Plaza and the bridge that would cross over the RTD rail tracks with a trail running up from the south end of, I believe it's Tabor Street. So that, we're, again, working through the design and environmental this year, hopefully, beginning right-of-way acquisition and construction late next year of 2024, which would continue on into 2025. And then finally, we're going to start the design of this traffic signal at 44th and Eldridge. This was, fortunately, we were able to make this fit within the definition of the Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond area, even though it's a little bit outside, but it benefits the area. So we're going to start the design. This was actually a signal that got transferred to us from Jefferson County. So it was originally owned by Jefferson County. It is very old, and it's one of those that the components just simply don't work anymore. It is adjacent to a, or has a railroad spur crossing on it, so it is a safety concern as well to make sure that that signal functions adequately. So the plan would be is to design that signal this year or in 2024, and then construct in 2025.
So any questions? We'll turn it over to Karen, I think, now for to talk about our super fun Parks and Rec Special Funds. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Scheck. Just as a reminder, the Open Space Fund is a restricted fund, and it's funded by a half-cent sales tax per capita allotment through Jefferson County Open Space for the purpose of acquiring, developing, and maintaining open space and park properties within the city of Wheat Ridge. So in the Open Space Fund, also known as Fund 32, you'll see a beginning fund balance of just over $6.4 million. Our projected revenues for 2024 are just shy of $3.7 million, with those major revenue sources being projected. Grant funding of approximately $350,000, and this includes some Jeffco Trails Partnership Program funds for the Tabor Lake Project, updated signage along the Clear Creek Trail, and a feasibility study in partnership with the City and County of Denver related to the Clear Creek Trail. And we certainly anticipate more grant funds awarded throughout the year, but this represents the existing requests with a high probability of funding. Other revenue sources include Jefferson County Open Space Tax in the amount of $1.7 million and Parkland Dedication Fees in the amount of $1.5 million, approximately $1 million of which is restricted for Transit Oriented Development. 2024 projected expenditures are approximately $8 million. 2024 projected expenditures are approximately 8 million, and these include 3.4 million for the green at 38th, which you are all familiar with. We are currently working with Architera, who's our architect, and ECI has joined our team for pre-construction work as the CMGC, which is Construction Manager General Contractor. And as you'll see on the next slide, we're also utilizing CTF dollars for this project, as well as continuing to seek grant funding. And we were actually invited to submit a full application during GOCO's winter cycle this year, which, while that doesn't guarantee funding, that's a step further than we've gotten so far, so we're pretty excited about that. We budgeted 250,000 for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, so this was last completed in 2015, and we are in accredited departments, and through that process, it's recommended that you update that master plan every 10 years, so we have that budgeted for 2024 with an adoption in 2025. We have 295,000 budgeted for playground replacement at Fruitdale Park, that's replacement of both the north and south playgrounds there. In future funding cycles, we're, we'll be looking at Prospect East, Louise Turner, and Hayward Park playgrounds. We have 30,000 budgeted for the Clear Creek Trail East Portal Feasibility Study. This project is in partnership with the city and county of Denver, and will only move forward if grant funds are secured. And between the grant dollars and the Denver contributions, the city of Wheat Ridge is only committed to contributing $5,000 towards this project, but it's something that will certainly benefit our residents that utilize the Clear Creek Trail. We have 1.7 million budgeted for panorama tennis court improvements. You may recall this being on the list last year, but the amount that we budgeted in 2023 was simply not enough to move forward with this project, so we're carrying those funds over and increasing that budget to complete that work in 2024. We do have architectural work associated with this project currently underway in 2023. Okay, we have 2.6 million budgeted for miscellaneous open space and park improvements in order to continue to take care of the incredible assets that exist in our park system. So for example, we have a Prospect Park Mill and Overlay Project, Youngfield Trail Head Parking Lot Repairs, dugout backstop fencing work at Randall Park, Stites Park irrigation, and much more. But this also includes the budgeted amount of 800,000 that's being carried over from 2023 for the Tabor Lake Project. And while we're under, we have architectural work underway for that project as well, we can't begin construction until we find out if we receive land-water conservation funds. So that's why that construction is being put off to 2024. Additionally, this fund covers the salaries of seven park maintenance positions and two forestry positions. Our projected ending fund balance is just over 2 million, and the majority of that is restricted, the restricted fund balance is associated with Parkland Dedication Fees. Next slide. Thank you. Okay, so, the Conservation Trust Fund, or CTF, is also a restricted fund, and per the Colorado Constitution, the Conservation Trust Fund receives 40% of the net proceeds of the Colorado Lottery. These funds are distributed on a quarterly per capita basis to municipalities, counties, and other eligible entities for parks, recreation, and open space purposes. So CTF funds are used for new projects as well as maintenance projects. The beginning fund balance of CTF is approximately 430,000, with projected revenues being approximately 470,000. Our projected expenditures are 770,000, and that includes 300,000 for the green at 38th, as mentioned previously, 420,000 for recreation facility maintenance projects, and similar to last year, we're continuing to prioritize taking care of the assets that we have. So we, within that 420,000, we have 50,000 for capital reserve, of a capital reserve fund for emergency repairs, and then 370,000 is earmarked for various improvements, like we have elliptical replacements, recreation center carpet and flooring replacements, railing and ceiling painting at the Recreation Center, a new lift for the pool at the Recreation Center, a gel coat on the Anderson Pool Slide, closure week needs, and more. We have 25,000 budgeted for resurfacing of various courts, and 25,000 earmarked for miscellaneous park maintenance projects. The ending projected fund balance is approximately 130,000, and now I'll turn it back to Deputy City Manager Scheck.
Thank you, Karen. Just to touch base real quick on 2E, I mentioned this earlier, there's no actual expenditures, project expenditures planned in 2024 from the 2E Fund, and the project expenditures are complete with the exception of a transfer to the Public Art Fund for the Wadsworth Public Art, which will happen this fall. So we'll bring that back to you after you adopt the budget, actually. Principal and interest payments are included here in 2024. So that wraps up our sort of discussion around sort of the major funds and projects, and we're going to start talking a little bit more about budget strategic priorities, and for that, we'll kick it over to Assistant City Manager Marion Schilling.
Great, thank you. Yes, as Ms. Scheck mentioned, in this next section, we're going to discuss our budget priorities, which includes the initiatives from each department, so you're going to hear from each one of us. And we'll also talk about what we heard from the community this year. So that'll look like what we heard from the Lex Talk Program, as well as from our biannual resident survey. So we will start with the city manager's office here. So in our Economic Development Division, we're continuing to engage development and redevelopment here in the city. It's a really exciting time for Wheat Ridge. Additionally, this year, we are launching our Economic Development Strategy, and that'll carry over into 2024. Next, you know, as we talked, as Mr. Goff mentioned, we have eight city council strategic priorities. Of those eight, one is housed in the city manager's office, and that is our implementing and addressing homelessness strategies. We recently celebrated, as you know, housing 100 individuals with our, our program, we're very excited about that, and we were also just recently awarded $25,000 through the Colorado Guinness Foundation from their Thriving Jeffco Grant, which we'll be able to implement in 2024 as well. Very exciting. And then in 2024, we're really just going to be working on continuing to grow and implement the resources that we've been putting toward our bridge housing programs. We're really focusing on our move-in kits and our stabilization funding in 2024. And then finally, for our Sustainability Division, we will continue to see the progress that we're making in our residential waste engagement program, with the goal to find out what our neighbors really care about with regards to our solid waste system, so that will be concluding in 2024. And then we are also planning to add one to two more sustainable neighborhoods, and we will be revamping the current Sustainability Action Plan, which will help to develop new sustainability goals for the city and for sustainable Wheat Ridge to pursue. That plan will be finalized in 2024 as well. So, another exciting news, Jeffco Public Health is implementing the Love My Air Program, and starting late this fall, and into 20, and for three more years, we will have two air quality monitors in the city. One will be located at the Recreation Center, and one will be located at Paramount Park. We'll be able to do live tracking on the air quality throughout the city, and the monitors all throughout Jeffco, but we're one of, one of the few cities that has two, so we're very excited about that. And then finally, we are also excited to share that we will be partnering with Resource Central in 2024 to implement new turf replacement program discounts for our residents. With this program, you, if you remove at least 200 square feet from your, your lawn, and replace it with Waterwise Garden, permeable green landscaping, and other water-efficient plant material, you'll receive a discount on your lawn, lawn removal costs through the city of Wheat Ridge. So I'll now turn it over to Ally to talk about what's going on in Administrative Services.
Thank you. Good job, you got a lot going on. In Administrative Services, we have what I would say are some transformative initiatives happening in admin services. Again, those are all the internal services and shared services for the city. So as you know, we're actively working towards the selection kickoff and implementation of a new enterprise resource planning system, ERP, to support Wheat Ridge in its next chapter of its evolution. This project will satisfy one of your priorities, which is to streamline licensing and permitting, but it will do much more. It will modernize and automate processes across the board in finance, human resources, courts, tax, permitting, and licensing, and it will align with our security-first cybersecurity posture mentality. Our new project manager that you recently approved is on board, Matt Bray. He came to us from the state of Colorado, and is having some fun digging in, and he'll be here later this year to ask for contract approvals from you all when we're ready to get going. We'll continue to evolve our cybersecurity practices with the addition of some new resources, training, endpoint monitoring and detection, and this work will never end. We're looking for, we're looking to add a new managed service for cyber services in 2024. We're very excited to further integrate the city clerk's office into the department with the addition of a senior deputy city clerk to manage the day-to-day operations of this office and support the elected clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick, in his duties. So I'm really happy to be partnering with Mr. Kirkpatrick on that, to make sure that we really do an incredible job of evolving that office to meet the changing needs of the city. And finally, we're very focused on licensing, compliance, and enforcement issues, especially in the area of short-term rentals, home occupation licenses, hotels, and tobacco retailing establishments. So those are the big priorities. I, I forgot one, actually, one really important one is also the implementation of the ADA web, new legal requirements, which we must be compliant with by July of 2024. It's another big initiative. So there's a lot going on in admin services. And with that, I'll turn it over to our municipal judge, Randall.
Good evening, everybody. Our mandate, the courts, any municipal court's mandate from the Supreme Court is to efficiently, inexpensively adjudicate municipal ordinance violations, so that's kind of the big overview of what we do. Some of the things we focused on this year are, we have a homeless court, and defendants have to come here to this building, but we're looking at a remote court. Well, I'll be here, and then we'll have court somewhere else in the city. Like, we're looking at that church at 44th and Kipling, so we're working out the details on that. It's not definite, it's not a done deal, but it's, it's, it's in the works. Oh, we had, you folks passed a street racing ordinance, and we had one case, and I think it only took that one case to put the kibosh on the street, really, to put the, the end to street racing, so that was something new and different. We handle a fair amount of abatements, those are property nuisances, they're under Chapter 15 for the most part. Probably handle about one a week of those, and they're everything and anything you can think of, having to do with improving or cleaning up property. They're not criminal cases, so there's no fine, there's no jail, there's no punishment. It's where if the court orders the abatement, the city is on the hook to pay for it, and then if the property owner doesn't pay, they can lean on the property. Couple of years ago, the state legislature made it, I don't want to say impossible, but almost impossible, to collect restitution for victims. Ongoing project that we're working on, trying to get restitution for victims, usually for medical bills, vet bills, property damage, that type of thing. You folks approved, several years now, we have the, I call it the Special Populations Fund, it's to, if anybody cannot afford an evaluation, or a class, or a UA, or a program, or whatever, they can fill out a financial affidavit, and city can chip in on some or all of the costs, or whatever treatment that they need. Failures to appear, those are people that have a summons, and they do not come to court. FTAs are high for all courts, so always a battle to get people in. First JD, which is Jeffco, and Gilpin, they just put out a study, their failures to appear are high as well. Oh, we mentioned the homeless court. When someone, a homeless person does come in, and they plead guilty, part of their sentence is, we give them the contact information for the navigators. As you know, we had two navigators, now we just have one. But all persons experiencing homelessness, they're given that contact information for the, now the one navigator. But we're going to remodel, you folks approved, I think last week, or maybe two weeks ago, approved funds to remodel the Judicial Assistant Clerk area. I don't think it's been changed, certainly since I've been here. Upgrade new furniture, you know, improvement in ergonomics, whatnot. And kind of a philosophical piece of municipal court, it's really a community court, focuses on the issues of Wheat Ridge, and what's important in Wheat Ridge, so district courts have a little wider view, municipal court has a city view, which is nice. That's all I have.
I will take it away. Next, just wanted to hit on a couple of the highlights of our department's ongoing work in 2024. So, one of the core functions and revenue generators in community development relates to the review of private development, both through permits and entitlements, and the development pipeline definitely continues to be full. You're seeing that in your neighborhoods and commercial corridors, so we have infill occurring throughout the city, and, and we expect to continue doing entitlements both at Clear Creek Crossing and at some key sites at I-70 and Kipling. The 2024 budget supplements the previously approved budget for the comp plan update, so that will, the, the $24 will support extensive public engagement that we'll be doing next year. Obviously, our biggest effort in the planning division in a while. The comp plan doesn't negate any of our recent planning efforts, so we'll continue to implement some of our recent guiding documents, affordable housing strategy, 44th Avenue Plan, Lutheran Master Plan. And then in the building division, it'll be a busy year, not just from permits, but also because it's time to update our building codes, so we'll be adopting the 24 codes, and certainly working with admin services on the ERP to identify ways to improve our plan intake, permitting review, and approval processes. Director DeAndrea.
Thank you. Touched on a lot of the capital projects already, so besides those, our focus in 2024 will also be on moving the department forward through an accreditation process through the American Public Works Association, or APWA. This will allow us to take a critical look at all of our operational areas and identify how we compare in terms of national standards to our peer agencies. And then, as previously mentioned, we'll be focused on some programmatic, modifying our approach, and looking at it more programmatically for both pavement management and sidewalk management, as well as continuing our efforts to assess and maintain the condition of the city's stormwater system.
Chief. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, from the Police Department. As always, our, our, the health of our agency starts and ends with the people, making sure we have enough people and the right people. I'm happy to say that, for the first time since I've been here, we are a very healthy department in terms of our staffing. We are fully staffed with our seven in the academy, to be 87 sworn. That is a first for, for my tenure here. We, we think that because of some of the things that we've been able to accomplish over the last few years, that we will have a better opportunity to retain a lot of those folks. That includes some of the compensation packages that we've been able to offer that are competitive, and some of the other things that we've done internally to increase office morale. So, aside from our sworn compliment, for the first time, we are fully staffed in records, we'll be fully staffed in our community service officers. We've taken one of those officer positions, and we've made that sort of a hybrid position to deal with some of the ongoing issues around, which, we're, we're still evolving, but to go and deal with some of the issues around short-term rentals and, and regulatory issues. So that has become a full-time project, and it certainly warrants more attention, as many of you may have heard from your constituents. Continuing with the internal part of this, what gets police departments in trouble year to year are several things. What you see on videos, on TV, is a lack of training or a lack of leadership. We focus on both of those things. We continue to focus on issues like active shooter, we continue to focus on issues like supervisory intervention. We are starting this year an ABLE program, Active Bystander Law Enforcement Intervention, so that our officers feel empowered to take action when they see something occurring that should not be occurring on the street. So we continue to stay ahead of the curve. While we hire the best people, we continue to make sure that internally we are strong, we are training, and that is backed up by our Calea assessments. This year, we had another Calea assessment. We met the standards at the highest level. We received a very complimentary review of all of our procedures and our policies. So we're very happy, not only with the people who work in Wheat Ridge, not only with our staffing, but with the, the policies and with the strength of the policies and best practices that we undertake in the city of Wheat Ridge. When it comes to the external part of our agency and our relationship with the community, that is everything to us, and we continue to foster our relationship-based policing efforts. We do that through community engagement, through our many avenues of community engagement. We continue to process that, whether it's through the Community Advisory Group, or whether it's through activities out in the community, where we go out with cops in the community, or coffee with a cop, or other events. or coffee with a cop, or other events that we're trying to promote. As you know, last year, we did, I'm not sure what we called it, but Halloween costumes in the community. And we had that under our former PIO, and we hope to continue that this year with our new one. But those events attract a lot of folks of different strata in our community, and we're always happy to meet them and to have them engage with our officers, because we know they'll see how good they are once they start communicating with them. We continue to focus on the things that were given to us under legislative review in 2020, data collection and that sort of thing. So we've improved our Axon devices, our Axon capacity. Axon is our body-worn camera systems, and now it's part of our interview rooms. So that's a seamless and new, in some ways, a new process for us, but it's very easy to provide that information, not only to the district attorney, but to defense attorneys, so it strengthens our ability to make sure those cases are timely and that we have the proper data collection in place for those. So those are all things that have been previously funded, but we continue with speed measurement devices, where we put those around the city. We will, again, begin to advertise where they were after, and we will communicate what the speeds are. We don't see that in the community survey as the biggest issue, traffic, but we feel it every day when we get phone calls about it. So we are still waiting on our e-citations. That will be a holdover for IT, and that's really a product of backup in the hardware. Certainly, the ransomware attack delayed us, but now we find the company is backed up for our e-citations, where we can go out and be more proactive. An officer engagement time is less, citizens are held up for less time, and we think that will be great. We continue to work with the hotel ordinance. We're an integral part of that ordinance, and that has, is continuing to prove fruitful, I think, in our reduction of calls for service in and around I-70, as we continue to focus on that area through that ordinance, as well as other enforcement actions that we're taking. That being said, this year's budget is certainly flat, but we feel like over the last couple of years, we've done a lot of things with grants. We have purchased the equipment we need. We feel very confident in what we've gotten. In this year's budget, we'll have a new FARO system, which is a focused area laser system, which is pretty much a standard now in the industry for major crime scenes and major accidents. It's an ability to project a very dynamic view of any scene for a jury. So that's part of our grant. We're still working on a grant. We hope to fund a new mobile command post, which is not a military vehicle or anything of that sort. It's just a command and communications bus, like the one we have out back. If you ever drive behind the building, you'll see what looks like a bread truck with our logo painted on it. If we get this grant during this year, we'll come back and we'll ask you to add that to our revenues, but that would be a major, that would be a major piece of our SWAT team communication strategy moving forward. And that's all I have now. So I will turn it over to Parks and Recreation.
Thanks, Chief. So I've talked about most of the items on this slide, but for review, in terms of priorities, we plan to update the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, begin construction on the Green at 38th, which is very exciting, to finally break ground next year, complete ARPA-funded projects, such as the Panorama Park tennis courts and the Tabor Lake Trail, seek additional grant funding for various projects and programs, and I'm so grateful that we have Brandon Altenberg, who's our Grant and Special Projects Administrator, because he does a tremendous job with that task, and focus on the maintenance and repair of existing assets within our recreation facilities. So as everyone knows, today's capital expenses are tomorrow's O&amp;M expenses, so it's really important to prioritize taking care of the things that we have. But I also wanted to quickly just provide an update while it's my turn on public art, just because there's a lot going on, and there's not any additional slide in here related to that. So you've probably all seen Agrarian Calling at the Clear Creek Crossing site. We will, it is basically complete. We just will be doing a dedication once the site is safe and some construction is done, and we can get people out there to do a ribbon cutting. You might recall that we came to you earlier this year with a donation from a resident named Karen Shelkey. She donated a pony statue by an artist named Kevin Box. It has arrived. We have it in storage, so we will begin install soon. And the Wadsworth Art Project is underway, the Ward TOD Project, there's a Public Art Selection Committee that's convened, so that's moving along. And then Maria mentioned the Youngfield Public Art. We just had a meeting today to kind of get started on that project as well. So there's a lot happening in public art in Wheat Ridge. So with that, I will turn it back to Lauren.
Thank you. So the Let's Talk program is actually currently wrapped up. We have touched every part of the city over the last three years. We'll give you a full update on that on October 2nd, but for the purpose of the budget, last year, I think several of you noted how exciting it was to see the alignment of community priorities and budget expenditures, and this year's budget is no exception. So we just wanted to call particular attention to these four items that specifically align with our Let's Talk feedback. So Youngfield, Streetscape, and NTMP directly respond to resident priorities. I think NTMP might be the one item that was mentioned in every single neighborhood. This year's budget adds additional funds for comp plan, as I mentioned, and that's just to help us continue to raise the bar on engagement as we wrap up this blitz, neighborhood blitzes. And then lastly, the city's tree canopy came up in several of our neighborhoods. There wasn't a desire to create a tree protection ordinance, but to rather find other ways to sort of preserve and build our canopy. So that's the tree planting dollars that you see this year.
Great. Thank you, Lauren. Then the resident survey is also another tool that we use to help us with our budget and identify important priorities or that we're hearing from our community, and we have several in the 24 budget. And the big one is Wadsworth. That is a major support in our community. We hear in our survey all the time to improve our corridors, and a lot of bicycle pedestrian improvements, we give a lot of support for, so we have just under $2 million in the budget for that. As we mentioned earlier, RTD Bus Terminal at Clear Creek, which will help expand bus routes throughout the community, not just Clear Creek. That was, that's a major satisfaction response in our survey, that, low satisfaction, I think, bus routes. School Resource Officer Program got even, much even higher support, I believe, in this last survey. It's always very highly supported, but it was a significant increase of support for our community, our School Resource Officer Program, we're continuing to budget that. And then stormwater, as we mentioned several times, updating the stormwater master plan. That was an area in our survey that where we got some feedback. Maria?
Fleet replacement. Great. Yeah, so we, city manages just over 150 to 160 pieces of equipment and different types of vehicles. And originally, we had identified $2 million in replacement needs for 2024, based just solely on the criteria, which is primarily age of the vehicle. However, we took another look at that and narrowed that down to about $900,000, because we also took into account mileage and usage, as well as the total repairs over the history of the vehicle, and then also the body condition. So the $900,000 identifies really just those very much needed replacements within the next year. As an example, there's also obsolete, those that are, become obsolete. So the Parks Chipper Truck, easy for you to say. The Parks Chipper Truck, just as an example, is what Parks uses to chip up branches and such. We can't even find replacement parts for that, even on eBay. So it's to the point where we really have to retire that, give that to somebody else who might be able to make that work, and get a new unit for them, so they can continue that effort. What we have done, and Ally will touch on this more in just a minute, is if our funding allows more, sometime in mid-year of 2024, we have identified kind of that next tier of replacements beyond the $900,000 at about $264,000, where we could potentially purchase additional vehicles if we can. We're also doing a little bit with the new public works truck replacement in terms of, we'll be buying just the chassis in 2024, so the actual cab unit that you see in the picture here, that will take more than a year likely to deliver that, build and deliver that. So then we'll budget in 2025 for the actual plow equipment that goes on the back of it.
Thanks, Maria. Super creative way to handle our growing needs in the fleet program. We'll just touch on ARPA a little bit. On April 4th of 2022, we all met, and you provided consensus to move forward with a spending plan utilizing funds that were allocated to the city through the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. As you can see in the left-hand column, the city received almost $7.9 million between 2021 and 2022. And while the city was not restricted to certain usage of the funds because of our size and allocation, you gave us direction to spend the funds according to the original intent of the bill. So I'm happy to say that spending's on track, as you intended, with just a tweak or two here and there. So at the end of 2023, as you can see in the center column, we expect to have expended $4.6 million of the $7.9 million allocation, so that's about 60% of funds. Because of the unfunded emergency repairs to our stormwater system, we diverted $225,000 originally intended for a specific playground purpose at Fruitdale, which you heard has still been funded, and $1.6 million originally intended for improvements to Lena Gulch, I think in '25 and '26. We've rediverted those funds to both emergency stormwater and other preventative maintenance in '23 and '24 in the CIP. So we pivoted a little. It still aligns with the intent of ARPA, but we frankly had little choice when it came to repairing these emergency stormwaters. I see a lot of heads nodding, so thank you. We project, at the end of '24, we should have $1.86 million left in ARPA, and that, again, that's, if you remember earlier, we looked at restricted fund balances, so you saw that in there. I will say, it's funny, Representative Pedersen was in town a couple of weeks ago, and the mayor hosted her, and we thanked her. This is, it's very rare that the city receives a direct allocation from the federal government, because we're less than 50,000 population, we're not, we're non-entitlement unit of government, and it really has been refreshing, and I think somewhat life-changing for the city. So my recommendation is anytime we run into a member of Congress, that we thank them and remind them of how transformative those funds have been coming directly to us, instead of through the state or even the county. Little bit of a shameless plug, I'm learning from Maria, my colleague. Let's talk about staffing and benefits. So, you know, I always say this, we don't make gadgets or gizmos in Wheat Ridge, we provide services. That's what we do. And so it makes sense that staffing and benefits continues to constitute about 60% of the general fund budget. So it's natural that so much of our budget goes towards those services. So let's chat a little bit about the headcount. So the total headcount for the city in '24 is proposed at 273.25 FTE, full-time equivalents. We began 2023 with 270.25 FTE mid-year. You approved the Housing Program Administrator, which is paid for out of the Wheat Ridge Housing Fund, and I think it's about, we've hired someone that should be here in the next month, so very excited about that. And you approved the IT, the IT project manager to work specifically on the ERP selection and implementation. Excuse me. Council has requested that we add the Senior Deputy City Clerk to the 2024 budget, so you see that here, that's reflected as the one FTE increase from '23 to '24. So this position allowed professional capacity to this very important office in the city that I think we all recognize is understaffed. New in your budget book this year is a more detailed description of how compensation is determined. It's the first few pages of the staffing section, and I'd encourage you at some point to have a look at that. It really describes how we go about reward, how we, it describes how we determine the compensation program, how we go about rewarding employees in Wheat Ridge. So in summary, we've been implementing a pay-for-performance plan since 2013, which ties compensation, specifically wage increases, to performance through alignment with the city's values, technical performance, and customer service. All regular benefited employees, with the exception of our police officers in steps one through seven in the STEP program, but including their supervisors, will be eligible for an increase in 2024 based on how well they performed in 2023. We conducted a comp analysis and a market study in '22, which did result in significant changes to the pay plan in 2023. So no changes are proposed for the pay plan in '24, with the exception to increases for the starting step of a police officer and the final step, step seven, which is the majority of our police officers in step seven, so beginning and ending steps. Those, we're proposing increases to those steps. We're also proposing another half percent increase to the sworn pension contribution, which will bring the city's match to 12% in 2024. You might recall, we were doing steps from, I think we started in 2020, a half percent in 2020, '21, and '22. We took this year off, and we're proposing another half percent in 2024 to bring the employer match, the city's match, to the sworn, our sworn members' pension to 12%. As this is such a lean budget year, no other increases to wage or pension are proposed, and overall, the proposed increases, increase to wage, benefits, and pension increases the budget by about $980,000, which is 10% less than last year in terms of increases. 2024 will be our second year of providing benefits through the Colorado Employer Benefit Trust, which allows us to offer both United Healthcare and Kaiser Permanente as options, as medical provider options to our employees. We've just received word that our premiums will increase by 6.5% in 2024. We've touched on this a little bit, but, you know, sort of throughout this presentation, this is a lean budget. It's designed to continue the provision of services to the community, but sort of with very little new, new programming. The city's leadership team did request quite a few new positions, vehicles, facility improvements, technology, and other items to improve service delivery. However, we simply could not fit those into the budget and maintain the minimum fund balance required with this stagnation of our sales tax projections. In fact, we had to cut approximately $3 million out of the requests that came in for 2024. It was a tough year. So we've provided a summary in the budget message and here on this slide of top priorities to fund should revenues improve, and we are highly optimistic that they will. If revenues do improve in the next few months, we anticipate returning to you with a recommendation to fund all or some of the items listed here. And you might recall, we did this in the budget, in the 2021 budget that we put together during COVID. You know, in 2020, we said, gosh, let's be real conservative on revenues, because we really, we don't know what's going to happen. So we provided you with a preliminary summary of top priority items that were not included, and sure enough, we came back to you the middle of that next year to fund some of those. So a little bit of a summary of this sort of 1.5 million positions. If we were able to fund these five positions, these would include three police officers, a stormwater supervisor, which I think you'll agree is a top priority here in the city, and a lead custodian, which will be offset, for the most part, by variable employee savings, so seasonal or, you know, non-benefited employee savings. As Maria already mentioned, five top priority vehicles were deferred in hopes that we could order them at least mid-year. Facility improvements includes roof, some roof repairs, some other facility repairs, electrical upgrades, engineering support, and some contractual services, facility repairs at all facilities. The technology budget includes tools and technology to help the city comply with the new website accessibility laws. I'm really hoping that we'll be able to put a little bit more money in here to help especially with PDF remediation, which is the number-one concern. Also, replacement switches and some other access control and security enhancements. And then in the area of public safety, stormwater priorities, another PD drone, I think we funded one, and we'd like two, and some e-bikes, which the poor police department, I think those get cut almost every year. Very sorry. Yeah. And now I'll turn it back to Patrick.
Thanks, Ally. Almost done here, folks. So just wrapping up here, as I mentioned in our budget message, as we move into the next chapter of Wheat Ridge's story, I still think that the future is really bright. There have been a lot of recession talks, but they still continue, but I think fewer economists are really predicting a significant downturn in the economy. Things have flattened out a bit, but I think they believe that's maybe as far as it's going to go. going to go. There's always some uncertainty there if something major happens in the world, but the good news is we've had a soft landing, I believe. And, but, you know, we have strong financial reserves and the, the best news is I think we have a huge pipeline of future development coming in our community, both residential and commercial development. And I just want to go through those, just to remind you a little bit. That's up there already? The next slide up? Yep. So quite a few redevelopment projects across the city, and none of these are surprises to you, Clear Creek Crossing. And for most of these redevelopment projects, we did not budget any revenue, new revenues from these sources. We budgeted slightly, I think about a half a million in additional sales tax for next year for some of these potential new developments. But Clear Creek Crossing, we, we believe the mayor and I were talking about this, this morning, this time next year, a good chunk of that development should be built out. Hospital should be open, the medical office should be open, phase two of the residential should be done, at least, at least one, maybe two motels will be open, Lifetime Fitness will be open, you all will be there, right? Except Karen, she'll be at the rec center. And the lookout portion is what, what they're calling the, kind of the entertainment district where all the restaurants are going. Lauren and I had lunch with one of the restaurant guys who, he actually lives in Wheat Ridge. Everybody lives in Wheat Ridge, is a former, former Rapids player, so pretty cool guy. Really excited about that. They're about two weeks out from submitting plans and they hope they'll have their restaurants up in about eight, eight months after that. They have four, four different options to bring in, a cocktail bar, I'm excited about. So very excited about Clear Creek Crossing. And there's other additional pads that will be developed also out there. The Wheat Ridge Works Station is continuing to involve, I think most of the residential is going to be finishing up here soon. Interestingly enough, a few properties have been coming up on the market recently up there, large ones, key, key sites. We're, I think we're staffs meeting with a potential developer here coming up, which with some very cool ideas maybe for some development of some of the, the sites that are up there. So there's some potential of Wheat Ridge Works Station beyond residential. Once the Wadsworth Corridor is done here in a couple of years, there's numerous underutilized properties along that corridor that I believe will redevelop very quickly once that, that road is done. Ridge at 38th is just still booming, which is pretty exciting to see. The transformation, several new businesses opening this year and others planned for next year. Gold's Marketplace, again, we've mentioned that several times, there, there's numerous businesses, restaurants and shops opening here and then probably by the end of the year, first of next year. And our bonds, we've been very fortunate, council's been very supportive, this has been very, very helpful for our community. Between the two E-bonds that are wrapping up, our URA bonds, and then hopefully our potential two J-bonds, the city will have over $150 million that we have to invest in infrastructure. And that money has only catalyzed, I, I don't even know what the number is, I'd like to see that, but as, when Ken Johnstone was here, I remember he always said with the two E-bonds, he wanted to see that money double or more, triple with other funds. And I think we're seeing that. Kind of a small thing, that the Kipling Ridge loan, I mentioned this last year, but we had a loan, you, you already had a loan on the Kipling Ridge project, we helped with that project, the Sprouts Development. That loan will be paid off this year. So the general fund will no longer have to pay the Urban and National Authority to pay for that loan, which was almost $600,000. So the general fund next year will see 600,000 or, or less in expenditures that we have to give to URA. So those are all the opportunities that I kind of see coming up. There are some challenges, of course, but we're, we're scrappy and we work great in chaos, right? We are, just wrapping up our facilities assessment, Maria's working on with Dan and, you know, they're evaluating the condition of all of our facilities across the city and, and what the projected needs are for the next decade or so. They have, one, one of their conclusions at this point is we're about 46,000 square feet short of office space for our next tenure needs and 96,000 of outdoor storage space. And that's, comes with a high price tag to make that, to fill that gap. So we don't have, we've, we've gone over some initial numbers of what, what some options would look like to build new buildings or remodel or move, and they're pretty high numbers. So it's going to be a huge fiscal challenge, but I think we're, we're up for it. Supply chain issues are getting better, I believe. We're still seeing some long production times for vehicles. Some other stuff has, has picked up, but we're definitely seeing some vehicles take a couple of years, right, Maria? As I mentioned in the budget message, inflation has decreased from 7.7 to 4.7 compared to last year at this time, but there's still some significant increases in certain areas such as food and housing, fuel and utilities, recreation and services, all which have impacted our budget. And costs for many of our services that we contract with are increasing, which obviously impacts our budget. An example is our victim outreach contract, which is a very important service. We need it, but I think we've seen a fairly healthy increase, 54% increase in, in what we pay them for next year. And I think it's increased a couple of years at 50% in a row. They've lost a lot of state funding and federal funding, so we're just helping them maintain the status quo, basically. And our, our quote for our liability insurance this year, which did not get into the budget because it just came, so it's a 38% increase. And a lot of that is from things like maybe the marshal fires, police liability, different things like that. Our turnover rate, hiring retention, our turnover rate has decreased pretty significantly. It was 16% at this time last year, it's about 11% right now. As I mentioned earlier, I think we're hiring really, some really, really good people. I think the biggest challenge is that we, to stay competitive, we have to stay very competitive with our salary and benefits to get these great people past the finish line of actually getting them to say yes to us. It's, it's very competitive right now and we have to make sure that our, our benefits are, are up there. Homelessness, it's, I don't think it's an issue that's going to go away anytime soon. I think the point in time count this year showed an increase in homelessness in Jefferson County fairly significantly, but I think we've seen some great successes, so we're going to, but we're going to have to continue putting resources to that. So those are just some of the challenges I see the next few years. Quickly wrapping up here, budget process. We did have a community partner grant program, which we brought to council with their recommendations. They recommended $200,000, that's a $40,000 increase over this year's budget. Then we did have a presence on What's Up Wheat Ridge to provide opportunities for the public to provide input on our budget. Outside agency contributions, you did have a tab in the back of your budget book with their request. And first of all, as I mentioned, we did include the 200,000 from the Community Partners Grant Program. Local Works Budget request for next year is 329,000. 30,000, there's a 30,000 dollar increase there over this year's budget because we, right, correct? Because we moved funding from the general fund budget to their budget for TLC.
It's a, it's greater increase than that, but it looks even higher. Yeah, but 30,000 of it, we reduced from the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So our dumpster program, we were funding out of our budget, but Local Works manages that, so we thought it was more efficient to put the money in their budget. So their, their budget will look a little bit higher because of that. The Wheat Ridge Business District is asking for 90,000, we did include that, that's their normal request. I would suggest or recommend that because of our budget situation that we, we potentially give them half at the beginning of the year and wait on the other half to see how the, the rest of the year goes. I, I believe I understood maybe potentially some of you are on that board that you may have a fund balance that may get you by for a while, but we can talk about that later. Carnation Festival Committee, they asked for 150,000 this year, we were only get, able to get 125,000 in. The Wheat Ridge, let's see, one other request we received was from the Wheat Ridge Chamber. They asked for 50,000, we weren't able to put that in the budget this year. Their, their request though is in the back of your budget book.
May I just add?
Yeah.
Mr. Goff, that the, the city treasurer is also the treasurer of the Carnation Festival and he actually offered up that $25,000 cut. So I don't know if you were aware of that, Councilor Dozeman, but he said, yeah, we, we did better than we thought and feel free to take that out. Thanks.
So the next steps on the bus, budget, we're just looking for some direction this evening. And if we get clear direction, we'll bring the budget back on August, October 9th for the required public hearing and adoption. And we'll also adopt the property tax mill levy for the year that same evening. And that's it. Yeah, and thanks, Cole. Cole, very first year, put together our presentation this evening for us. Thank you very much, did a great job.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I, I guess we have a couple of minutes left for questions, so. Okay. I'm, I'm pulling your leg, one, one is noticeably longer than the other one. Start with Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, thank you for that presentation. And I, I don't have a lot of questions, having read through it. I feel like after four years, I finally get it after reading it and feel like I have some questions to ask tonight. So I'm just going to quickly go through because I know we all probably have questions and I've got five or six of them, so I'm just going to start out. First of all, and this is not about any more money, these are just about really some connections I'd like to see made between different departments. And I want to start out with stormwater and some of the things that we talked about. I agree that we probably need to go towards a fee, I'm very supportive of that. But we, I, I think we have some issues about communication in, in Wheat Ridge around sort of, you know, because everybody's being assessed differently for their sewer and what's the difference between sewer and stormwater and all these things, I know that we all know, but I'm not sure people necessarily connect since we're not a full-service city. So I'd really like to see some messaging around that. And, and also to include the fact that we still do have, while I recognize they're going away, we still do have some active agricultural ditches in the city that are involved in some of our major projects. And there's just a real lack of understanding around that and also where the city gets involved with those things. Because sometimes, and a lot of times, when all of this rain and stuff happens, that infrastructure that have, that has been sometimes pushed around for, for reasons of modernization by the city break down. And so, and, and, you know, also being on a ditch committee, when, when I call the city as a ditch person, there's just a lot of, well, that's not our responsibility and, you know, just sort of knowing some of the history of that so that the various ditch management know when to contact the city and, and deal with all these things to. So, so just really bringing those things together of understanding stormwater versus sewage and then the other aspects of stormwater, which of course are the, the ditch system. So, number two, and this has to do with licensing. I agree with everything, and I'm just trying to do rapid fire, so I'm, I'm going back and forth and looking at, at some of you. Ms. Shek, you were, you were talking about continuing to streamline the license. I, I think that's fantastic. I do think we have, when we're thinking about what's next in Wheat Ridge, I am still very concerned, we have some home occupation businesses that continue to operate that are not okay and they're getting relicensed every year and I'd like to go back and look at some of those businesses. I don't think just because you got your license the first year, 25 years ago, that we can continue doing that because I'm still getting calls in, in my district about a business that is, that is in a residential neighborhood. It's very obvious, it's their only location. And we don't have a way between police and the licensing. Same one, same one, still getting calls. And the residents have just stopped calling because they're so tired of, that business has been there for 20-plus years and they just don't call the city anymore. So, and I, I'm not going to talk about which one it is, but, but there are issues like that where, you know, it kind of feels like there's a communication between what can police do versus what the city can do. And I know the city can just not renew the license, but I know that there has to be documentation and things on the police side. So I would just like to make sure that we're addressing that streamlining of when it is an issue that people are calling about, that we, whether it's the short-term rental, that we, we follow through on some of these repeat offenders and we do what we say what we're going to do and remove licenses. So, and, and that, I just want to connect with the business district, which I really appreciate. But having sat on that committee now for about a year, I, I am, I'd like to see more connection between the variety of businesses we have out there. I feel like we see a lot of similar businesses that are in a particular pipeline and talking to certain people. And I feel like that is a really, really great resource for small businesses and, and I'm not sure everybody knows about it. And, and Mayor, you can comment on that as well. But I would like to see more connection between licensing and information about other sources for improvements on properties and, and, you know, sort of, again, connecting all the dots, these are things that don't cost more money. Did that make sense? So that was sort of a.
When you say want more variety of businesses that are applying for grants from the Wheat Ridge District?
Yeah, yeah, just in that we have, we have the variety of licensees and we have a whole list, but it feels like there aren't a lot of businesses applying for what is essentially free money. And I'm always amazed that there is not more, you know, there are just such cool programs through the Wheat Ridge Business District. And, and I, I just feel like there should be a lot more applicants. And, and I'm not quite sure why that is. So to me, there's a connect, there's an obvious connection with licensing and getting the information about those opportunities out. And, and again, that is just having sat on it for a year, so the mayor might have more comments about that. Three, I had a question for, for Maria about, did you say that the Tabor Street issue and bridge is already funded?
Yes. So that's, that's the, the bridge over the RTD rail lines?
Yes, yes. Okay, so that's going to be striped and everything and that is in this year's budget, correct?
The, will start construction in 2024, it won't be completed until 2025, though.
Okay, all right. I just, I am now commuting every day and driving over that bridge and I see bikes.
Sorry, I think there's confusion here. You're talking about the Tabor Street Bridge?
I'm talking about Tabor Street Bridge.
Not the bridge over the tracks.
Oh, excuse me. No, so we did get a Dr. Cog grant for partial of that.
And that's already, that's what you started with, correct?
No, so this is, this is the bridge up at the rail station that will, it'll pedestrian bridge that will be constructed from the south side of the rail tracks to the north side at Ridge Road.
Are we addressing Tabor Street and the bridge at all? Because it's terrible.
Yes, so we did receive a, a tip grant for that. It's just, it won't start, that process, the design and environmental won't start until, I believe, 2026.
And it's just design at this point, not construction?
Correct.
That's all the money.
Okay, I, I, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I feel like that is such an accident waiting to happen that it, it feels to me like so much more important than a pedestrian bridge over the tracks. It's terrifying and I drive a truck and there's no way for bikes to get over to the station either on 50th or, excuse me, on Ward or on that bridge. And then you come down and, and I'm just realizing it because I've started driving it in the last month to the station, it's terrifying for everybody. It feels like that bridge is going to fall into the, to the highway. And, and then you dump down near Heineys, there's no curb cut, I'm sure people are speeding, I have no idea, but it, it's a hill coming down, so I imagine they are. I, I'm terrified for me, for people walking, for, there's no sidewalks. It seems like this is an obvious super big priority, but I, I'd like to know what other people think about it. I, I just feel like it's terrifying.
Yeah, and we, and again, we got a grant for it to, to do the design work and environmental, which has to come first.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay, for the tree program and the tree planting, so the tree planting is just for city trees, correct?
It was a Let's Talk priority, but it lives in the Parks and Rec.
Okay, yeah, yeah. The tree program is in Parks and Rec, but the tree planting is going to.
Both would be in Parks and Rec.
So you're going to plant trees in the city right-of-way?
I don't know what that specifically was referring to, what came up this evening. But I can work with our forestry team and get back to you.
Well, I was just, you had presented that there was some money set aside for tree planting, and I'm just kind of curious if the two conversations.
Was that from Let's Talk?
None of the programs on that Let's Talk slide live in community development. So most of the feedback we got from the community were things that folks wanted other departments to do. So we were just connecting the dot that the budget in the Parks and Rec Department related to trees corresponds to the feedback that we were getting through Let's Talk.
I would say, I mean, we're always doing tree planting, but where specifically it is, I'd have to speak with our forestry tech.
Well, my question is, is do we need to come back and revisit the tree program? Because the tree program was for private trees. What you're talking about is public trees, correct? Trees in the right-of-way?
We do both. Yeah, we plant trees on public, on government property all the time.
On street property?
Yeah, but then we have a tree, we have a tree program where people could come buy trees for private property.
Right, right.
And we also have the grant program for diseased trees, trims, trimming trees and such.
Okay.
And that's nothing new in that. We've had all that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't a new thing.
No, no.
Okay, all right.
I was a little confused, my apologies.
Let's see, and then, this goes back to the other thing that I keep getting asked is, and I'm sure everybody else is too, are we going to build a bridge over Kipling for bikes? And the answer is no, for lots of reasons that I know that we've all talked about. And yet, I drive down Kipling, I'm sure you all do too, and I see people cross at, you know, they're essentially jaywalking with their bikes. And I'm terrified. And I'm just curious if, you know, I hate to say, do we need to build a fence? Do we need to build a fence? I think, I feel like there's some low-hanging fruit of stuff that's really potentially dangerous that we're not dealing with in this budget, that I'm a little worried about, and.
Well, we can speak to that. I think we got a, applying for a grant, I think, or did we get one?
Yeah, it's a Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership grant to do a study there. Because essentially, the open space management plan, excuse me?
That people are going to die there?
Well, what is feasible, because, yeah, building a bridge over, we've learned through our open space management plan, isn't feasible, but it could be, you know.
But you're thinking about it, yeah, cool, thank you. And I don't mean to make light of it. I'm just, you know, just wanted to, I want to be able to tell people that we're thinking about it and dealing with it. And then the last thing, and this is more for Ms. Scheck's, just so I understand the budget a little bit better. So, or for anyone who wants to answer this question. So the unrestricted funds and the 17%, we really save 20%, right? With the.
Seventeen plus three, right? Your policy, the council's policy is 17% unrestricted, could be used for anything. Tabor says you have to set aside 3% for specific emergencies, and I think that can only be used.
And you have to actually declare emergency before you can use those funds. So we could have used those funds during COVID.
Yeah, no, I'm just kind of curious. When do we use those funds? Because we talk about an emergency, but we always have them, right? I mean, did we use them when we had the cyber attack? Or is it just stuff that we keep?
We've never had to, fortunately, use the Tabor Reserve. It's always there, but, you know, if we have a huge emergency, I mean, COVID could have been worse. Cyber attack could have been worse.
But when we have these emergencies, that's what we're dipping into?
The undesignated reserves we dip into for, when we bring a supplemental budget appropriation forward, that's usually we dip into the undesignated reserves.
And that's that 17%?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thanks. I just was trying to understand sort of, you know, because we talked about emergencies, but it's like, you know, the emergency fund that you never touch.
Yeah, that's the 3%, yeah. But that's, it's a good point, because we're at 17%, that's your minimum. And Ally's kept, has kept telling staff for the last couple of months that no supplemental budget appropriations anymore, because if we do, we're going to go below 17% unless we get to a point where we know our revenues are going to be higher.
And we will tell you that, moving, like, if there's an emergency, something we deem an emergency that we think you should know about, that's not necessarily a Tabor emergency, we'll tell you. If we need a supplemental, and we will tell you what it will do to your unrestricted fund balance, and you get to decide.
Cool, okay. I just was trying to understand, I know you guys have it managed. I want to thank everybody. I know this is a lot of work, and I'm very supportive of everything in here. I just, like I said, felt I needed to say those things about a few of the issues. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you all as well. I think you guys have done a great job at trimming quite a bit, I think, and as well as making sure that we still can offer most of the services and things that we've done and all the programs that we've added over the last couple of years. I'm just going to kind of run down, kind of as I wrote them down as you guys were going through things. I think definitely doing the stormwater study this year is a great idea, obviously. We have streets collapsing, so as we look into that, and I would have said many years ago, there's no way in heck I would have supported a stormwater fee, but as we move into looking at these projects and these capital projects and how big they're going to be, that's something that we do need to look at. And actually, something I think that our community will support because it is long-term investment in our city. The traffic signal improvements on Young Field, as somebody who tries to get out at 40th and Young Field, which I believe is one of those signals that might be out of tune quite a bit, I appreciate that, and so do all of the people who are going to be going to and from the hospital in that development and trying to go that 40th and Young Field at least, but all the way through. The bridge improvements on Tabor, I had the, kind of the same thing as Counselor Weaver did, that I know that's not something that we can budget for this year, but as we move forward, that is one of the things that I've gotten more emails and, including the Saturday at our District 3 meeting, people talking about over and over again. So as we look at design for that, that's definitely something I'd like to see us prioritize in the next couple of years. Karen, I did have a question about the tennis courts. You've got money budget of those. Are tennis courts being used? Or should we look at maybe putting in pickleball courts or something else? Or striping for both or something like that? Because I see the people on Prospect, at Prospect Park constantly using those. I don't see the tennis courts at all the other parks always being used.
They are utilized quite frequently, and we initially talked about striping some for pickleball. We, in seeking USTA grant funding, they won't fund pickleball, they'll only fund tennis. And then with more recent conversations about what we've seen in other communities, the noise level is pretty loud, and that's in a neighborhood. So we kind of stepped away from the pickleball in that particular park.
Okay, that makes sense. I just, I appreciate the answer as well. I wanted to give a big thumbs up to the turf removal program. I think that's kind of cool, especially as people are looking, and we have a lot of people all over the place looking to zero-scape and change their lawn. Ms. Scheck talked about the software for better licensing, things like that. I think that's one of our biggest needs at the moment. I've heard from different construction companies, developers, new businesses, everybody coming into the community, that our processes, as far as the people goes and customer service, has been light-years from what it used to be. And I get people coming up to me on the street going, man, I don't know what you guys have done here in the city over the last couple of years, but it's so much easier to work with. And talking to the guys at the Third Shop Pickleball place the other day, the Farmers 5000, they are over the moon at working with the city and however easy everybody's been. But I know that if we improve some of that, those processes and those licensing and that software is going to be huge. Judge, I want to commend you on the homeless courts and working to help those people more than penalize them, because I think people here that we give citations to homeless people or whatever it is, and they're, you know, how are they going to pay that? But that's not the point, right? The point is to get them to a place where we can help them. So I really appreciate the work that you guys are doing with that as well. The moving the code enforcement officer to the hybrid position to help with staffing and following up with all of our new requirements, and we have added quite a few, I believe, with hotel licensing and short-term rentals and things like that. I think that's a great move, makes a lot of sense. And also, Chief, the training that you guys are doing with your officers is phenomenal. We had Tyson, and his last name is escaping me. He was at our District 3 meeting the other day, phenomenal. Did an amazing presentation, talked to all of the residents. He's phenomenal. He's the person that did our, one of our people that did our active shooter training here. And, you know, he offered to do that at the high school with their parents and with their teachers, and just absolutely phenomenal. I appreciate that the budget does reflect, kind of Lauren's presentation, what our community is looking at as far as all the needs and the money that we've put into the traffic management program, different programs like that. I really appreciate that. Maria, when you were talking about taking the 200, or, sorry, 2 million down to 900,000, I was reminded of a conversation I had one time with my grandfather and Larry Merkel, who used to be a city councilman a long time ago. You know, they were talking about how they would come in with a budget, and usually Public Works would ask for a bunch of new stuff, and they would literally go out to the Public Works shed and, no, this is fine, you don't need that. This is fine, you don't need, so I really appreciate the work you did cutting that budget and getting to what we need now, and then hopefully we can come back to go back and look at that again. And then I, I think that the biggest part this year, kind of to Counselor Weaver's point, the economic development study, one of the things that I'd like to see come out of that is that we get our business association, the Chamber, the Business District, all the licensing requirements when somebody is getting a business license or something like that, that there's a lot of follow-up that goes along with that. I've had to get business licenses in other cities, and there's a lot more, it seems like a lot more follow-up from the community development director in some of those. And sometimes it's just an automated email or something like that. But something that tells new business owners, this is, when you're opening a business here in Wheat Ridge, here's the things you should do, and here's the things you can do, and here's your resources and all of that. And that's, I think, something that needs to fall into that department because it can be a little scary, and every single city and every single county and the state all have different requirements. So some way for our economic development director and that department to help those businesses. But overall, I think this is a great-looking budget, and I hope that we have the increase in sales tax to be able to come back and fund more officers and things like that. But I think the improvements that are planned on all over, hopefully, again, we get the sales tax to continue, and I think we're in good shape, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things I just want to, first of all, I love budget night, man. It is so, I'm a fangirl, a huge fangirl, and I, not because I love budgets, but I really love getting, like, just such a deep understanding of, you know, how staff and council are working together to really invest in our city. And this is always such a good comprehensive snapshot, and I appreciate the good work and hard decisions that go into this gigantic binder that arrived on my doorstep last week. So a couple of things I just want to call out and really celebrate that made me really happy, excited to see a line item for that electronic sign. And I'm going to be even happier when I see it in front of the rec center. And the next year, this is something, probably for six years I've been chatting with Patrick about as just a really important communication tool. I know what's going on at the church down the street from me, because they have one, and it's just a great way to reach our community. Another thing I'm excited about, reiterate, the turf removal. I think that's fantastic. One thing, getting past, like, the high-level stuff, the reappropriation of staffing, I thought was really thoughtful, and to me just shows, again, staff, you know, putting their heads together and really thinking about, you know, how can we do more with what we have? Those positions seem to really meet the needs of the city. Also, I'm just really glad that we're not reducing the outside agency funding. I think those funds are just really important partnerships with our community and allows our community members to be part of this budgeting process. They get it at the easy time of year. But I'm just really glad that we're able to continue funding those. Okay, a couple of questions. So I did see in there that, like, our revenue from the solar garden from Excel is going down, and what's up with that?
I know. We just, it just kind of started happening this year, and I think this year, we're down to $500. So we haven't had time to dig into it. We're going to do an audit with Excel and ask why, what's going on. So, yeah, don't have an answer yet.
Okay. And on the topic of Excel, I hear more through rumor mill than anything but that some of these great new businesses that are coming in are really getting held up by Excel.
Not rumors.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I think some of that may have been come from your mouth. Is there anything that we can do as a city to get Excel to not hold up the openings of these, like, starting to, like, sad, coming soon signs?
Yeah, we have a government liaison, which is good. He's been pretty helpful, I think, on a few items. And he's kind of our go-to if we're struggling. And we have numerous cases. It's not just businesses, it's city projects as well. I think, yeah, the business next to Bud's Restaurant, you know? That's the reason they haven't gone forward. It's frustrating. You got anything to add to that?
Yeah, just in working with them on various efforts, I know that their staffing levels have dropped dramatically. So similar to other agencies, CDA too, you know, they just don't have the staff that they used to to be able to deliver the same level of service. So I don't think it's a purposeful thing. It's more just a workload issue more so than anything. But we're happy to, if we hear about businesses, please pass those along to us, and we can certainly work through that government liaison person to try and elevate those issues.
Okay, yeah, I just think as we're thinking about economic development, and it's exciting to hear about these, I mean, I would hate for people to be, I mean, I'm sure it's the same anywhere, but I don't want people, I mean, these business owners have a lot writing every month that their businesses don't open. So I know we all know that, but. Another question, so I'm wildly optimistic that 2J will be our next bond initiative. And how does staffing up for that look like in this budget? And is that showing up here, or is that really deferred to 2025? Because I know it's a lot of projects, and that can't be add to the strain of staff.
Yeah, not too much.
Briefly about the redo?
So we're in the midst right now of moving all the capital project efforts to the Public Works Department. So right now, Community Development handles kind of the planning and engineering side of things, and then there's a baton handoff to construction. And so instead, what we're doing is we're bringing two engineers over to Public Works, and we're going to have that entire process from beginning to end, soup to nuts, all be within Public Works. So just some staffing movement, again, not necessarily adding new people, but to your question, Councilmember Holtein, we have been talking about that. We haven't identified specifically within the budget what we're going to do, but I think it would be an addition of resources.
Yeah, specifically, we did at least identify one more project manager. If 2J passes, we'll come back and ask for one more project manager to work on those projects.
Okay, great. So a couple more things. Maria, you and I had talked a couple of months ago about including green paint in the striping and refreshing some of our bike facilities that are both tired but also not really compliant with best practices for safe crossings. Is that included in striping for next year?
It is. So I think our, again, our approach has been somewhat, you know, a little bit haphazard, where we're looking at different areas or we're compiling a list. We want to, again, kind of look at it programmatically. And if we're looking at redoing an intersection, what changes do we want to make to make that safer? Make it more usable by people? So not just necessarily restriping everything that's there, but enhancing it at the same time.
Okay, great. The ADA program, which I think when we first started doing it, it was more at like $50,000 a year, and I see is up to $100,000. When we first did the study for that, I, even though I was bike-ped advocate person as a citizen at that time, didn't pay much attention to it. And what's coming out on a lot of these quarters that we're doing is like the single-directional pans. Can we revisit that for controlled intersections to do bidirectional pans to ensure that, like, if it's a controlled intersection, that the pans are actually going into the crosswalks and not into the street? Just in controlled intersections? Because there's a couple of those where we've put in ADA, and we've got a nice controlled intersection, and the pan doesn't align with the crosswalk.
Gotcha.
It goes into the street. So as we move forward with that program, if we could look at that standard, it might set us back just a little bit on a couple that we get done, but doing them right, I think, is in service to the people who use them. Then, only a couple more things. Okay. Oh, I really don't have any other questions. I just have a couple of suggestions for grants. I have. just have a couple of suggestions for grants, I have money, money ideas, I think there's actually some grants for e-bikes, I happen to work on this and know this stuff.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, so I'd be happy to take a look and see, I think the Colorado Energy Office one is closed that we would have been eligible for, but there's some forthcoming community e-bike grant programs coming forward, so would love to get some e-bikes in the police department.
Those for, any kind of e-bikes or any of the, they don't, they don't-
Yeah, not as, I mean, as long as you're not getting your like Mountain Joy Ride bike, they're all pretty eligible, so, so let me take a look and see what those programs look like, and then there's some specific grant funding around bridges, I know you, you guys are really good at federal, but there's a discretionary federal grant called the Bridge Investment Discretionary Grant that the Tabor Bridge would be a good candidate for, and just a reminder for any bridge reconstruction, that you need to account for bikes and pets in it, that's actually federal regulation.
Which grant was that again, I'm sorry?
The, so it's part of the IJA and it's the, yeah, Bridge Investment Grants?
Yep.
And then, last question, I, this is a question, Founders Park, and no, that's not much of a budget, that's the park that's chained off in, it's a parking lot, right? Town Center, sorry, it's, that's the same thing to me.
Founders is-
Founders and Town Center.
Is by Active Adult Center, huh?
Yeah, so Town Center, Park, I don't know how that flows through the budget, but like, what is, where, where is that in the process of the city's control of it and, and using, because isn't the plan to use that then as to go towards the green?
Yeah, we did get an appraisal on that, but right now we're just in limbo waiting to see what the school district contributes related to the green at 38th, which changes how we'd go about selling that property, so once we get that information, I'm prepared to move forward with Jefferson County Open Space, I have to hopefully sell that and utilize it towards the green.
Okay, that's great, I think, I think that'll do it, thank you.
Excuse me, thank you, Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor, and a big thank you to staff, I know this is a tremendous amount of work, I couldn't even imagine how many days and weeks you put into it, but it's, it's a very clear, very concise, I had a couple of questions, I'm definitely in support of the turf conversion, for the past few years I've had constituents ask me because they heard about Colorado and what I could tell from that is that Colorado was just basically for, I think municipalities, wasn't really geared towards the individual homeowner and so I think that's a great program, was that on a specific page in the packet or?
In the, in the book, I don't know if it was, I know that we mentioned it during the city council meeting when we discussed the, the water irrigation code updates, so that was kind of introduced there, but we're working with Resource Central on that one to, to help to offset it and I think from what I was, I was reading up on it earlier and I, I think it'll be a pretty good discount on it, I want to say it's something like, it's two dollars and fifty cents per square foot, I think the rebate could be as low as like a dollar per square foot on that.
I would, I would make a suggestion that you tie something in to that, because there's been some lessons learned, having, I, I used to live down in Las Vegas and working with the Southern Vado Water Authority and people would take the rebate, put black plastic over top of the grass and then put rock mulch and, and then that's what we had, and so that if staff could just make sure that there's a certain criteria, it's, it's great, I'm all supportive of, of removing the turf, but not just a simple black plastic, rock mulch, where it's my two fifty a square foot.
Yeah, and for this particular one, it'd be a partnership with Resource Central, but we'll talk to them to see what they do to, to ensure how people actually implement the program.
And then my, my second suggestion is if we're gonna, if we're, and I really applaud the city and staff for going this route, that could we consider converting zones along Kipling in Discovery Park, there are a couple zones that, it's just basically non-functional turf, it's, it's in between like the skate park to the curb and I know right now it's probably too much technical, but it's a Texas hybrid, which is low water use, but it, there's nobody using it, it could be converted to something like a buffalo grass or a low native that would kind of tie into like, hey, we're trying to use less water, but not, not redesigning, just like here, if there's a certain zone that runs parallel generally to the road, it'd be a low hanging, maybe a low hanging fruit, but just, just a consideration.
Yeah, I definitely think we could look into that.
Okay, and that's what we're doing, we have a test plot right out here in front of City Hall, we're doing that, I'm not sure if you noticed.
I, I apologize, I did not, I will take a look at it.
If anybody, I thought you would notice.
I'm usually just trying to drive.
We'll take you out there tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I would love to, I'm very supportive of the stormwater fee, I know we've chatted about that and you have my full support on that, on the Kipling Crossing, for what's being proposed, and I understand, I'm out there, I was out there today, I'm on the Clear Creek all the time and me, what I usually do is I don't cross there where some people cross, I think that's, it's very, it's definitely a hit or miss and I do not, do not want one being hit, but I go underneath the, the bridge under there, but the problem is, is for, you know, this isn't the city's fault, but for the past weeks, it's hit or miss on, I'll be down there and there's like an inch of water, you know, and it's frustrating, now I do have a choice, I can, I don't have to go down there, I can go up above, go at the intersection and cross there, but yes, it would be, it would be lovely if we did have some type of either pedestrian bridge near that crossing or something underneath, if we did something underneath, not next to the Clear Creek, because I know that we have flooding and then we just, we have another issue, it's, it's complicated, I'm almost kind of thinking that, you know, we reluctantly, I supported the, I can't remember what it's called, the traffic hawk, maybe is what that term was, I supported it, but I almost in the back of my mind think that we need to have that conversation with CDOT and, you know, if it works, great, if we start having, you know, I don't want anybody to get hurt or killed, but if we, you know, there's a conversation and it's like, you know, what we'd really like is we'd like some other type of pedestrian altogether and I'm, you know, I'm supportive of both, but, but I do understand, Councilmember Weaver's reservations about that area, because I'm, I'm on it all the time, and then at the rec center, I think you mentioned maybe a digital sign going up and if so, is that going to have some air quality information?
Displayed or?
Yes, yes, I'm not sure what the intent of that was.
That was similar to other locations where it's more like the tracking of, so you can change the messaging.
Right.
Electronically.
Because the reason I bring that up is because there was a grant, maybe a federal grant by EPA for a digital sign tying in air quality and we just heard that there was like, we're one of the few places that has like two monitoring areas for air quality.
Yeah, so the air quality monitoring is through the Love My Air program that Jeffco Public Health is implementing and that is going to have a separate dashboard online that you'll be able to do live tracking to see the air quality at the rec center, so there will be an air quality monitor at the rec center and one at Paramount Park, but you'll have to get online to see the live data.
Okay, and then, since the, the bicycle striping was brought up, one issue that, you know, we, we pride ourselves on being inclusive and I, I go, I go by all these different areas where there's the green stripe, the white stripe, generally, the green and white are identical in shape and direction, sometimes the green stripe's there, sometimes the white stripe's there, sometimes both are there, what's, what's interesting is I had dinner with my niece and her fiance, her fiance sees and shades gray, so when he's looking at this, it looks identical, what I would suggest is what is a standard, is using for the bike, I'm fine with the color, but make it chevrons, and you see that typically in a lot of places, I see in Europe, I see it when I'm coming up 32nd, coming up to Kipling, there's a, there's a bike in the, you know, the two, the chevrons, the two triangles, yeah.
Oh, it's not, it's not colored?
No, 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 it's, no, it's, it's, it's a-
Shark fin?
Yeah.
It's also referred to as a shark fin?
No, but it's a-
It's referred to as a shark fin, too?
Yeah, yeah, it's usually like a double, like two, just the, not the bottom of the triangle, but the two top angles and they're one on top of each other, it, it's a really distinct, because there's been so many places and I can even drive down the Clear Creek and I took some pictures and I took pictures of like, well, well here's the green stripe for the bike, but it's missing the white one for the crosswalk, so if you're a kid and you're like, oh, mom said I need to go take the crosswalk, well, you're going to go on the green one because that's where the crosswalk stripes are and, and I just think, I'm always thinking about safety and, and when I, when my niece's fiance was, you know, saying like that, it's all gray, it's just like, you know what, I should say something, I'm on city council, so that's what I just wanted to get out, is that I want to be inclusive, I want our community to be inclusive and I want it to be really clear and I feel like those two symbols are just too close, other than the color, they're just, they're too close, they're too similar, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hoppe. Could I ask you to talk into the mic, I'm having a little problem hearing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things that I just want to call out about this budget is, you know, as, as we saw in one of the slides in the presentation, historically, we end, we have an ending fund balance that is more than what we budget, which is nice that we have, we have those funds that come back, so, but what that means is that our overall expenses are less and so people tightening their belts in their departments and so I appreciate that. Another thing that I noticed when I was going through here is every fund that I looked at, the interest rate was exceptionally better than what was budgeted and like, I mean, even like, like if you look at the equipment replacement fund, Special Fund 57, the interest rate budgeted, that like interest revenue budgeted, it was two hundred dollars, but what we think we're going to end, the end of the year is four thousand one hundred and one dollars, so excellent work, I'm assuming that is our finance department and our city treasurer doing, doing that for us, so thank you, Treasurer Miller, and I'm glad that Councilwoman Hulteen brought up the solar garden, I was also really confused by, I mean, sixty thousand dollars to five hundred is massive, so I'm glad we'll be looking into that. A couple of questions, so you guys, I had two pages of questions and you've managed to bring it down to like five, so through your, no, five questions, two pages of questions to, to five questions, so, some of the things I wanted to look at, so the, let me just start by what page I'm on first, okay, so when I look at the Police Investigation Fund, Special Fund 17, page 184, we had budgeted to spend nine thousand dollars on something under other major equipment, we spent zero this year and now we have it budgeted again, proposed for 2024, what other major equipment is that that we're looking at for that?
Fund 17 is a, is our, is our investigative fund based on basically old asset forfeiture money that we have, so generally we haven't encumbered that, we were going to encumber that last year, I think for our new PIO's equipment related to her position, which was a new camera and things that she wanted for her position, so we were able to, I was actually able to get that from our West Metro Drug Task Force, it's complicated, but asset forfeiture goes to the task force now, it doesn't come to us, this is a fund we hold a little bit in reserve, but last year we didn't spend it because we didn't, we didn't spend it on that, always, always have these unanticipated costs around investigations that we end up with, which are usually software-related, some of that this year will probably be for our forensic computer situation, so we, we budgeted, I think, several thousand for software on that, our computer forensics lab gets a lot of equipment from the US Secret Service, but as the government goes, they're, they're certainly looking at their budget as well and that's under scrutiny, I think, by the divided federal government, so we, we budgeted money there to cover expenses there and for some of our new equipment around that.
Great.
So we try not to spend it if we can find it elsewhere, but we do budget it because it's kind of the back, it's the backstop against those things.
Super, thanks, Chief.
And there's no new revenue, right, Chief, so eventually that, that fund will disappear?
Yeah, that fund will go away, but we, we haven't spent, I don't think we've spent anything out of it since I got here, but that's always because we're always able to find another funding source.
Super, great, thank you, and then, when, when we look at the Wheat Ridge Housing Fund, the Special Fund 45, the, so our revenue is, is the short-term rental lodgers tax and then we had originally transferred from the general fund, which I believe was the short-term rentals, larger lodgers tax, so, so we had, so we're, we're budgeting four hundred thousand for that, those revenues for next year?
Yes, yes.
Those, so I just wanted to clarify, that's the, is that forty percent of the tax that comes in from that and the other sixty percent is encumbered to safety and the other stuff, or is that the total tax that comes in?
It's fifty percent.
Fifty percent?
Yes, so this fund, so all lodgers tax is split as follows, fifty percent general fund, thirty percent crime prevention, twenty percent CIP, this four hundred thousand takes a hundred percent of the short-term rental fifty percent allocation and puts it in the housing fund.
Okay, great, and then I just wanted to call out some exciting stuff, I'm glad Councilwoman Hulteen also brought up the ADA improvement, for many years I have asked during the budget season to spend more than fifty thousand dollars, because by the time that we get done with our plan, we'll be reworking our plan and so I'm happy that we have put some more money into that, and then the bike pet improvements got a real, a real bump for, for, to a hundred, proposed would be a hundred and, one point six, one point six million in bike and pet improvements, so that's a nice, excellent bump, so thank you for that, and then the last thing I wanted to ask about, oh no, I have two other things, but second to last thing I wanted to ask about, let me find my page, oh, it's my glasses that are holding it, when I was looking at the economic development under, under line items, so page 264, I noticed that the contribution from the city, from the general fund is a hundred and fifty, it's typically three hundred thousand, last year we didn't request that, those funds, and so I was wondering if we could potentially add the hundred and fifty to our potential supplemental budget request, which would bring that total to one point six million? It is an agreement that the city has with Renewal Wheat Ridge for, it still has a few more years on it to fund that three hundred thousand every year, and then, I have this one, oh, I don't need that one, I already asked that one, oh, and then the, the money we're going to spend on the RTD bus terminal, does that mean that we're going to get our 32 bus back for our high school?
I'll let Lauren speak to that.
That is the hope, there's a hole in bus service in southwest Wheat Ridge when 32 and 28 were terminated at Wadsworth, go out of service, go north to Old Town to use the bathroom and then come back, so our hope is that by partnering financially to provide a driver release station at Clear Creek Crossing, that RTD would agree to reinstate that service, I had a meeting with them this morning, we have a letter drafted and a strategy to sort of talk to that board, so that is our, our hope, that RTD would formally agree to reinstate that service if we, as a city, are going to participate in that infrastructure.
And then would that be something that potentially is, is representatives of our community, that we should be getting ahold of our RTD representative to be discussing? Yes, thank you. Overall, thank you very much, I, I appreciate that, that you are being fiscally minded and, and budgeted, I'm a little bummed out because every year I like to come and say, no, no, we don't need to save twenty-four percent, let's spend some more, but, but that's not the story this year, so I, I appreciate, I appreciate the way that you have, have, you know, kind of attacked that, that short funding and, and made those cuts and then have the supplemental budget possibilities for later, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor, I won't be long.
A couple of things, I'm, I have some questions about- A couple of things, I'm, I have some questions about the green. Okay, it seems like it's still up in the air, and the question is, how much money will the schools be giving for this project? My concern is, we're leasing that property, is that correct? Where we're going to be redoing?
We're, we're still negotiating for that. It's either gonna be a long-term lease, or they're going, or a purchase.
Well, my concern is, what's going on with the schools right now, we have no idea, and they don't either. So what if they decide to close Stevens? They own the property, we might have a lease, but they own it.
Yeah, it would be a, a long-term lease, 50 years at the minimum. So, yeah, we wouldn't do anything for less than that, for as much, much money we're gonna put into it. There is an opportunity to potentially negotiate a different agreement where they, they deed over the park portion to the city, if we, if we construct the parking lot. We're still trying to figure that out, that, they, they do have a lot of unknowns going on, and they have some new staff. I have a meeting next week, I believe, with their new COO to talk about it.
Because I thought the deal was, they were going to be paying the money for the parking lot?
That was originally, yep.
Oh, it changed?
That, these things change sometimes, unfortunately.
Okay, but I didn't know that.
Yeah, well, we're not, we don't, we're not sure where it's gonna end up yet, so we don't have a, we don't know what to bring back to you. As soon as we know, we will. We are in the middle of design, we did get direction from council to complete the design. We're still moving forward with the design. Schools, so they're still, they're still interested in finishing the project, we just don't have details on ownership of the property yet.
Yeah, my concern is, they don't seem to have money for, to pay teachers. I don't see where they would have money to, you know, contribute to this, or whatever. That's my concern about the green, 'cause that's the largest amount of money, 3.4 million for the open space project. And if we started, I would really wanna see it finished, you know?
I do, too.
Not just out there.
Yep.
Okay, another thing, when we're talking about the tree planting, okay, I don't know if anybody reads the paper or not, but yesterday in the Denver Post, the U.S. Department of Agriculture is giving eight Colorado cities, they're gonna share $22.2 million, and Wheat Ridge is one of them, and Wheat Ridge is to get 618, no, wait, okay, $669,73, and this is for tree planting and other programs that increase access to green space. So this probably isn't in the budget that you're going to have? It is in the budget for, yeah?
We applied for that grant funding. I actually hadn't heard that yet, that we received it, so that's fun. So thanks.
It's the Sunday Denver Post.
It probably went to Brandon, who was away at a conference, so.
No news like good news.
Okay, and then, also, yeah, regarding the turf removal and things, okay? I do know that there are some places in Wheat Ridge where they're using artificial turf, and that is exactly what Wheat Ridge High School has done, I believe. And I've just heard that the football leagues are very concerned about artificial turf versus real grass, because they have forever chemicals in them, it's the highest incidence of community-acquired MRSA, and so the water does not go through artificial turf. So for saying, remove turf, then it should not be, I think, artificial turf, because any type of, and plus, there's forever chemicals in them, too. So it just sits on there, and so that, to me, isn't sustainable.
Yeah, and Lauren can maybe speak to it in terms of the city's general philosophy on artificial turf, but for this particular program, with the partnership with Resource Central, it would require that it's replaced with Waterwise Garden, permeable green landscaping, or other water-efficient plant material. So this particular program would have a requirement, it would have had to be replaced with.
Okay, and regarding RTD, the number 32 used to go west all the way to Youngsville, Applewood, and the thing is, we've got new businesses that are going there, Chick-fil-A and all that kind of stuff. It shouldn't just stop at Kipling without going further. And I actually did call RTD, because I was stopped at the light at 32nd and Kipling, going to go east on 32nd, and I saw an RTD bus that was on 32nd Avenue, and it turned left on Kipling, like it was gonna go towards, you know, 26th or whatever. So I called him, and I said, oh, I saw the bus, I saw a bus at 32nd and Kipling. And the guy goes, no, you didn't. I go, yes, I know what a bus looks like. And so, you know, I got nothing from them. I'm, I'm saying, is this mean that the bus is gonna be? No, he denied there was a bus, so, so I don't know. So, but the bus shouldn't just stop at Kipling if we're gonna use a bus, go all the way to where the shopping center is. That's what I feel. Okay, I'm done, thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and, and thank you for putting together this budget and being very conservative and mindful of our current economic challenges, and I really appreciate you dropping it off to my front porch as well, that was extremely helpful. So most of my questions have been covered, and I'll kind of give a, a different point of view when it comes to artificial turf, because I would really like for us to review that and potentially allow that in residential areas. Not necessarily for my front yard, but as I'm considering and do have dogs, artificial turf would be a lot more affordable than tons of gravel, and it would allow for easier cleanup. And, and so, when I'm considering landscaping, I, I do wanna do zero-scaping for my front yard, so that program sounds wonderful, but for my backyard, when it comes to my dogs and everything that they destroy, it's literally mud. So this, this rainy season is always a lot of fun. So I would like to see us consider artificial turf and, and being able to utilize that in residential areas. I wanted to address the bus terminal at Clear Creek Crossing, 'cause it appears to be that that is a replacement of what used to be at the Applewood Center, as far as the old Walmart, and, and I do hope that that would be, that would mean that we have more access in Wheat Ridge. However, I don't foresee the staffing shortages for RTD or school busing improving in the near future. I had a couple of questions about the 38th and Kipling intersection improvements. So if you're adding and modifying, is that going to require any purchasing of property to allow for those improvements, or is that going to be within the, the city's right-of-way as it stands?
Yes, it's currently within right-of-way.
Okay. Then, I just wanted to bring it to council's attention in talking with some members of the Arvada City Council, and, and it was addressed briefly during the outside agency study session in regards to the Mission Arvada of the Rising Church, and them potentially moving and, and having some obstacles. But the city of Arvada had chosen to defund them, because they haven't been very neighborly, given some of the things that have been going on. And so I just, I haven't delved into that much deeper, but I, I think that that's something that we might wanna consider, maybe reaching out to the staff at Arvada, just kind of to see what the underlying issues were before moving forward with giving them a little over $6,000, and maybe reconsider that if necessary. Couple other things, love that our police department is fully staffed, and that our municipal court is running smoothly and modernizing. I, I love that we are finding more ways to be accessible and to be mindful of some of the trials and tribulations that, that our population is experiencing, particularly with those, those experiencing homelessness. Also, really appreciate staffing and some modifications and reorganizing and seeing how you guys can just be, be more lean. And then, for the CIP, I think is the last thing that I kind of wanted to address, I just circled a few things. So I'm on page 209, and for the miscellaneous drainage improvement projects, for the 2024 budget, it's allocated at, at $0, even though we have an estimated of, of 2023, and is, I, I just was wondering if that's because we are going to do the stormwater master plan, and then at that point in time, we're going to designate funding for it, or if you don't anticipate having any more emergencies in 2024?
Yeah, I'm praying at this point, so. Yes, our, our plan right now is that we, we aren't proactively addressing any projects until we can prioritize those better. I think if we do identify, or if we come up with more emergency projects, we'll identify those funds as we go.
Yeah, and this, this funding was moved, if you remember, from the RPA dollars that we were gonna use for Lena Gulch, so we moved those into this budget, just to get those projects done.
Okay, and so with that, that was another one that I wanted to address, are, are we going to be needing to fund the mitigation for Lena Gulch at a later time? Because that's not, that doesn't appear to be allocated in the 2024 budget either.
Yes, so that would be, the intent would be, is that we'd look at that with all the other projects, and again, prioritize that against our, how that falls out in terms of the amount of, you know, number of houses that that protects, the number of people that it protects, versus some of these other things, that's what, we'll go through that effort to prioritize that.
Okay.
So it hasn't been lost, it just doesn't necessarily rise to that level yet.
Okay, and then, Councilmember Hoppe kind of mentioned the, the spike with bike and pedestrian improvements, and that appears to be a considerable increase, not only in 2024, but anticipated moving forward, and I was just wondering if staff could maybe speak to that, as, as to what kind of bike and, and ped improvements that you anticipate needing, you know, millions and millions of dollars over the next five years?
Yes, that, that, why that went up significantly is the local match for two grant projects that we received, one for the Wadsworth path, again, on the west side of Wads, between 32nd and 35th, and then 35th Avenue from Wadsworth East, where we're gonna also do some bike-ped improvements. So that's our match, is why you're seeing that in there reflected.
Okay, and so I understand that for, for 2024, as far as that, the Wadsworth project, but, you know, moving into 2025 at, at 1.8 million, and then 2026 to 5.6 million, I just, I'm wondering what the projected anticipation is for those kinds of projects?
It's the same project. It's, it's over a three-year period, because of, for, 24 is design for the Wads. We got, for the Wads sidewalk only, we got about 7.8 million. That's the, a grant amount of 7.8 million, that's probably what it's gonna cost.
Okay.
A loan for Wadsworth.
Wow.
Yeah, 'cause it's gonna, we decided, we got the money, so we said, let's do it right, so we're doing a detached sidewalk there, there's some right-of-way that's gonna be required, the ditch runs through there, so there's ADA improvements, so it's quite expensive.
Okay, so then...
So that's, that's all of that. That's, that's, that full amount in 24, 25, and 26 is for Wads and 35th Avenue.
Wow, okay, thank you for that clarification. And then, for the sidewalk improvements, it just has a, a balance of zero for, for the expenditures, and I'm just wondering if that's reflected in, in a different line item? Because we anticipate having those within the, the 2J ballot initiative, and, you know, it's a priority and, and plan, as far as I, I've, I'm concerned, it seems as if we're going to be having a lot of sidewalk improvements, so that, the, the line item at zero just is confusing to me.
Yeah, that, that's the intent, is we'll see how the ballot initiative comes out. We, we haven't identified any specific projects, so that's why we zeroed that out at this time.
Okay, so that, that answered my question. And then, I also wanted to give kudos to our Parks and Rec Department, so for having, for not having had a master plan since 2015, you have done a phenomenal job at updating all of our facilities and planning ahead, and so I just am really appreciative of that. You know, we utilize the parks quite a bit, we love the Clear Creek Trail, you know, are able to take it to Anderson Park, to Prospect Park, and so we, we've just really enjoyed that amenity in our community, so thank you.
Councilor Nosler Beck, you're still with us?
I'm, I'm still here. I, I just sent a note over to Ally and Patrick that, I'm gonna follow up directly with them on a couple of questions that I had, but thank you, I do just wanna say thank you to staff for all the hard work that went into this, this budget.
Councilor Holtein, do you have one question, or do you have more questions than one?
No, it'd be super fast.
Okay, you may ask one question then.
My one question, like I'm in jail. I actually forgot, you guys offer ecopasses, right, for your full-time input? You don't?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, then, my second question doesn't stick. So are you aware that the state is offering some pretty good programs for offering ecopasses?
I think we looked at it several years ago, we can look at it again, if there's maybe something new.
So it's new within the last year-ish?
Okay, good.
And it's, it's pretty aggressive, so I will, I will send that to you. And then, just a suggestion to Maria, to adopt the NACTO bikeway guide.
Sorry?
To adopt the NACTO bikeway guide. It's, I think, the gold standard for bicycle facility design, so I'll make sure you get a copy of that, I have a couple sitting around my house.
Thank you. All of councils has a chance to, to listen to the presentation and make questions and comments. Very good discussion. We're now about, you know, two hours and 45 minutes into this meeting, so if, if we're not, I'm, I'm happy to continue the meeting, but we're going to have a break if we're not gonna wrap this thing up and leave, so. Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With great thanks and appreciation, I'd like to ask for consensus to move forward with our proposed budget.
Okay, so we have consensus to move the, the budget forward?
Thank you.
Okay, good. Now, we're going to, we've got staff reports and elected officials' reports, so I'm gonna ask what length these anticipate, because if they anticipate to be too long, I'm going to recess our meeting, and we're gonna take a break, and we can come back. Mr. Goff, do you have a...
Staff asks, nothing.
Nothing, okay. Are there any, are there any elected officials' reports to, to be entertained at this time? Councilor Holtein, is this a short?
It's super short, it's super short. A couple of quick things, just, I thank you to Maria for fixing the rapid flashing beacon at 38th and Upham, really appreciate that. I also forgot to thank staff for throwing a great boards and commission party, that was really fun, and I heard a lot of really great positive feedback, and was clearly welcoming to a wide variety of our boards and commissions. And Happiness Gardens is as happy as always, and I picked the best strawberry I've ever had in my entire life this morning, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any further brief elected officials' matters to come before the, the body tonight? Okay, so we, thank you very much for a great presentation, a lot of thoughtful, thoughtful work going into the budget. I think, I think our city is really on track to deliver to our citizens, and I appreciate that. Great questions. We will be back one week from tonight here for a city council meeting. If there's no more business to come before council, we will stand adjourned.